Regular meeting of the city council to order is ten ten. My apologies, I was in the phone wrapping up a very urgent conversation. Nevertheless, we are here. We do have a quorum of five. It's Brian on it. No, we have a quorum of five that are present on the Ds. Want to, at this time, acknowledge my friend and my brother and sometimes my pastor, CJ Rose, to come and to open us up with the word of prayer. And after that, we will have the pledge of allegiance. And I would ask if Dr. Ashby Foot will lead us in there. Pass Rose.
Oh, Lord, we thank you for another day, for last night's rest and this morning's rising. We thank you that we are blessed to gather in this place, in this beloved city with soul. And I thank you for these elected leaders, these public servants who have been tasked with deliberating, discerning, and deciding upon the affairs of our great city. Would you watch over and bless and grant wisdom to each council person? For the mayor's office and the entire administration, for all of the entities and workers, employees of the city of Jackson, that as a result of their working together, we would be able to ensure greater peace and prosperity for our capital city. For all the agenda items today, we pray for their swift discernment and decisions. And we pray ultimately, Lord, for each of these men and women, their families, the concerns of their hearts that go beyond their work for the citizens of Jackson. Would you bless them individually and collectively? And bless us all for your glory and our collective and common good. Amen.
Thank you. Pass Rose. As we can start before, I got, I need, I need one request so that we can just make sure we have the information needed as we make, have some considerations and discussion coming forward. I'm requesting that we get the updated, or we get the dates, confirmation dates for JRA board members. All right. Councilman Lee.
I'd like to open and close the meeting in memory of Joan Norwood and to keep Senator Solly Norwood and his family in our prayers. They lost Joan, his wife, over the weekend and funeralized her at New Hope Baptist Church this past weekend. So keep them in prayer.
All right. Councilman Hartley.
Yes, and, and I'd say ditto to those comments. Senator Norwood and his wife, Joanne, a vital member of the Ward five family. And we express our continual condolences. And please reach out to them as time and circumstance allow to offer you any help or assistance to the family. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Any other openings? Yes, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open and close the meeting in honor of Mr. Melvin McNair Jr., who passed away in Palm Bridges Park a week ago.
All right. Any other question? I mean, any other? Yes. Councilwoman Lee.
I'd like to say congratulations to all of our Callaway class of 2024 graduates, as well as our Tugulu early college students, all the students in Ward two graduating.
All right. On that note, I would like to say congratulations to all of the Forest Hill High School graduates and Winfield graduates. Anybody else? All the Jackson Public Schools. All right. All the Jackson Public Schools, we want to say congratulations. All right. We'll start, we, colleagues, we have public comments first. What did I do with my list? Do I have the list? What's the first name? Fred Johnson. I got.
Good morning, councilmember.
Good morning. Hit, hit the green button right there.
Good morning, once again. My name is Fred Johnson Jr. I reside in Councilman Brian Griselle's ward. I have a great deal of concern about the vegetation has growed onto the roadway on West Haven Boulevard in between JR Lynch Street and Tulane Boulevard. And it's causing the motorists who are driving northbound on West Haven to go into southbound traffic. And it, I haven't seen an accident yet, but I saw a nearly road rage. When someone goes into your lane of traffic and if you're not level-headed enough, you know what's going on in that city, you're gonna turn around with your gun and come back and kill him. Okay? So we want to try to, I'm here to request that that problem be resolved in a timely manner. Like I say, if you stay in that lane, the vegetation scrubs up against your vehicle and no one wants that. And so I hope it don't go on deaf ears since my councilperson isn't here. I'm glad to see the mayor come in and, and maybe he could rectify that situation. It's about vegetation has grown onto the roadway, Mr. Mayor, on West Haven Boulevard. Please, if you could, if you could help me with that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wright, do we have crews? I guess that would be right-of-way, right-of-way crews. Lavine Road, they're concerned about same situation, but it's coming under the bridge. Well, vegetation is growing over the bridge and the signs and everything else. And secondly, do we have any contract with anybody who can go in the drainage and cut the trees out?
Yeah. So first, I want you to, you to be aware that Mr. Stanley Wesley is taking notes for us right now. So I don't want you to think that we're not, we're not notating this. And to Councilman Stokes as well, we will lift this up to Lakeisha Weathers, which the, the right-of-way maintenance, the cutting is now in our solid waste division. She, she maintains and manages this. So we'll lift up these issues. Councilman Stokes, with respect to the drainage areas, that is a part, that is inclusive of what we're trying to do with the 40 million to clear up these, these creeks that have overgrown trees and shrubs that are stopping the flow of the water. That's a part of what we're trying to accomplish along with that. Whether, if it's, if it's a low-hanging fruit and something that can be easily done with them, then we'll direct them to go there. But if it requires a more intensive effort, then, then we will try to undertake that through, through some of that money.
Yes. Councilman Hartley.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think part of his question was, are, do we in fact have crews out cleaning the sides of the road, right-of-way crews? I think his initial concern was trees and vegetation growing out into the, into the path of cars. And that, so that's my question, not just the drainage issues, but the road maintenance itself. Do we have right-of-way crews cleaning the sides of the road?
We do. We do, which is directed under solid waste with Keisha, Lakeisha Weathers. Now, whether or not they're able to keep up with as much as they need to is another question. In fact, I, I know that, that they are not able to keep up with all of it. And so they are trying to bring before you an effort to hire private companies to augment what they're doing. They want to give some contracts, and so we're trying to identify the funds to do that. So yes, they're doing it each and every day, but that's in addition to the cutting schedules with cemeteries. That's in addition with their cutting schedule all across the city. There's some, you know, outrageous amount of mileage that they cover each, each week or month. I don't remember that exact amount, but I am familiar with Keisha, Lakeisha Weathers putting forth a proposal to fund us hiring other private firms to augment all of these areas. And, and I support that, and we're gonna put that forth before you very, in very short order. But that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, address these specific requests, but it is, it is more than, than what the crew can maintain on their own, but they will look at the area that you're speaking of, and we'll look into the area that you're talking about as well, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to hear about the cemetery because we've had so many calls concerning cemeteries, especially during Mother's Day, where people were trying to go, especially the cemetery on Capitol Street, where they couldn't get to the grave sites because the grass was so high. And I know the cemetery near Mary Jones School is still extremely high, and they even called about the cemetery near Jim Heel, especially when people trying to go see their loved ones, their mothers and everything else. My, my concern, and that's why we had the conversation with, with IMS and John Calhoun a few weeks ago, and I brought up the same issue. There was some councilmembers understanding that the 40 million would be used for paving streets. And I keep hearing you saying over and over that it's gonna be used for drainage and those kind of things. And, you know, it's important that we all get on the same page. If we're not gonna use the money for paving streets, we need to know so we can tell these citizens that, don't look for streets to be paved with this 40 million. If we're gonna use it for drainage and drainage projects, then we need to make sure that we get in our wards, these neighborhoods that's experiencing a lot of drainage problems, so they can get on the list. And let's find out how do they get on the list to make sure that, that their drainage is addressed. So again, I, I would hope, and that's what we, I told John Calhoun right here at this podium, same thing, because they keep saying, well, it's gonna be used for streets. And I've heard you say not one time it's gonna be used for streets. You keep saying drainage.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm grateful that you, you were clear that I've been consistent, because we are consistent. We're trying to identify dedicated streams of funding to the challenges we have, instead of trying to take all of our money and spread it across the entire gambit of things that we need to do, and therefore, nothing ever gets accomplished, no impact is ever made. We've asked Neil Schaefer to be here with us today. I think they're prepared on the discussion item of streets to talk about the street resurfacing that is, that is planned and is gonna be undertaken, some of which has already been done, but, but other projects that are coming very shortly. So they came to provide information under that discussion item. We have a significant drainage issue. I'm not telling you anything that you don't know. What I am not aware that the public knows is that we have concerns that if we don't catch up to that problem, just as in recent years, we have, because of the decades of neglect of things, we were in a sewer consent decree. We were in an agreed order of consent over our drinking water. If we don't start addressing the drainage issues, then we can be in a stormwater consent decree as well. And so we want to aggressively go after these issues so that we, and many of your stormwater issues contribute to your street issues. Your street issues, when water sits on roads, then it helps exacerbate the challenges that we have with maintaining our streets. And so that's why we want to use these funds. Now, the bond, the bond issuance was a more comprehensive, it allowed for if we decided that we wanted to do streets. The bond issuance had language that was inclusive of that, if that was the direction that we wanted to go. But from the administration, what our intent has been, what we asked IMS to do and specifically carve out, was to meet in communities across all of your wards, talk about the more significant drainage issues so that we could address them. And so that's what they've been, that's what they are going to be doing, and that's what the contract is, is scheduled for them to do.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have deep concerns that when we don't do regular maintenance, have vibrant maintenance program led by a public works director using current taxpayers' money for maintenance programs, and I don't see folks out cleaning up on the side of the road. I don't see them in any of their drainage digits, cutting down trees. And then it becomes an emergency and a big project.
Yeah.
When we, and when we simply need regular maintenance to address the trees growing out in the side of the street. And again, that's my big concern is that, and then we float a bond, getting additional taxpayers' money over a longer period of time to do things that should have resulted from regular maintenance in the first place.
Just push pause right there. Hold, pause. Push pause. This is public comment. We're gonna bring the discussion item up so we can have.
I would like to address that specific thing.
Just hold on, hold on. Push pause. Thank you so much.
I want to thank the mayor in advance for handling this situation. I thank all of you.
Mike. Fred Johnson.
Fred Johnson Jr.
All right. GPD. Push pause for a minute. Mike. Mike McCola. Come on, sir. Let me, let me get them, and then we gonna bring this, because I know that Mr. Hibbert Neal has to go, so we're gonna put, bring this discussion right back.
We gotta keep him here to hold me.
Are you gonna stay to hold me? All right. Go ahead, Mr. McCola.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the Jackson City Council. My name is Mike McCola, and I'm here on behalf of WMS One, Amazon of Jackson, and Voice of Calvary Ministries to talk about the Cereal for Summer Children's Food Giveaway, which takes place at Voice of Calvary Ministries on Saturday, June eighth. I am not here to ask for donations, although I would not turn them down. What I'm looking for is support from the mayor's office, from the city council, helping get, helping get the word out about the event. We're looking to feed at least 300 families that day. It will be a drive-up event, so I'm looking, if possible, for help with, from law enforcement, for traffic control, help spreading the word. It would be a great opportunity, I believe, for the mayor's office or members of the city council to come and show up and maybe even help pass out the food. We need volunteers as well. And I would be more than happy to stay after the meeting and talk to anyone about this. I do have flyers, I do have my business card. I'd like to give a shout out to Council President Banks, because someone from your office contacted me on Friday and suggested I come here and speak. And I'm very, very excited about this. We've reached out to dozens and dozens and dozens of people, haven't gotten many responses so far, but I'm hoping maybe this will help make things a little bit better.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. McCola. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Give us that date one more time.
Saturday, June eighth, from eight AM until 12 noon, or when the cereal runs out, Voice of Calvary Ministries. I have plenty of flyers. There's a QR code on the flyer, which will actually take you to the Facebook event page as well. You probably won't see my name mentioned much, not on the, on the event page, but if you actually go to our Cereal for Summer Facebook page, that's all me on there. On the discussion page, on the event, you'll see my name and phone number multiple, multiple times. And again, I have business cards, and I have plenty of flyers here, which I can leave. And again, I would also be more than happy to stay after the meeting and discuss this with anyone.
Yeah. So we'll commit within our weekly press briefings to, to do some reminders to the public and put out some stuff, maybe on our social media pages. If I'm, if I am available, then I would love to come. I can't, as I sit right here, and, and say what my schedule looks like, but I appreciate the work that y'all are doing, and we will, we will certainly commit to helping get the word out.
Thank you very much. Can I leave the flyers and the business cards? Well, if no one else has any questions, I'm gonna go before my meter runs out, and I either get a ticket or get towed.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. That concludes.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Let's go ahead and get at least eight of these items done. So go to consent agenda. Yeah. Because if not, yeah.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Second.
Let's move in property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously, that's, it's a quorum of six. Again, it's a quorum of six. All right. Colleagues, let's go to since.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
On the issue of quorum, I would like to say, for the councilman of Ward four, I haven't had a conversation with him, but he's an educator.
Yes, sir.
And they in the final stages of school.
Yes, sir.
Nine times out of 10, because he very seldom miss a meeting, I don't want people to, you know.
Yeah. That he's just missing.
Yeah, because, you know, it's just school, school right now, about to get out, so it's probably school-related. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Councilman Stokes, for that clarity. All right. Let's go to discussion item thirty-three. And I'm, I'm gonna unpause. Councilman Hartley, if you could pick up on your discussion. This, this is dealing with the, you remember why I stopped you? About the pastries, potholes, and all of the, the appropriations and all that kind of stuff? Thirty-three. All right. Well.
Yes.
But you, you were talking about.
Yes.
Right. Go ahead.
Basically, my discussion was this. We need to have a regular steady maintenance program for, for everything, and we, the city of Jackson used to. And that is where we had crews out every day doing these things, whether we need to hire, hire these folks or fill the positions, whether we need to hire a public works director to make sure we get these things done. But the city lives and breathes on our ability to maintain it on a day-to-day basis. And a lot of times, we can't afford to let it go to an extreme level and then, and then to hire some outside contractor because it's a massive undertaking. And so I would, I would really support the, again, the continuance of just regular maintenance. It's been a while since I've seen crews cutting the sides of the, the trees on the sides of the road, as the gentleman was, was addressing. It's been a long time since I've seen crews out cutting vegetation down in the drainage ways. And it's been so long since I've seen crews on the side of the road scooping dirt out of the, out of the curb side. And these things are regular city maintenance items. And when they fail, we can't just declare, oh, this is some great big tragedy upon the city. No, this is a lack of maintenance that we need to pay attention to every day. We need to have the personnel, we need to have the plan in place, and we have, need to have a public works director in place to make sure these things get done for the largest city in the state.
All right. Thank you. Let, let, let me just, Dr. Hartley, before I acknowledge you, since I believe, and it already has, the public works director and engineer may come up in this discussion, let's go ahead, clerk, and just put for the record that we'll be handling the discussions thirty-three and thirty-four right now. All right. Dr. Hartley.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I agree with Vernon Hartley, Councilman Hartley, that we do need regular maintenance as a city. And as a councilmember, I'm sure he's aware of all the challenges that our public works department has faced, even when there was a director. We are.
Thank you.
Working with a firm that will provide the kind of leadership that our public works department needs right now. We're working on getting that contract together to bring before you, so we will have that leadership in public works. However, the concern is valid, but it's delayed. These conditions in the city have been there for quite some time. And we have recently moved those services to the solid waste division, and she is also, because of the lack of staffing, looking at contracting the maintenance out. So the issues that you raised are being addressed. There isn't anyone ignoring the fact that these things need to happen. And that's what I just want to respond to your concerns.
All right. Mr. President. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Mr. President, on Fortification Street, between West and State, this work is newly done, but no one's cleaning out the drainages. And I know Councilman Hartley saying that, speaking about the creeks, but we got to have someone to get the sand and the mud and other things out the drainage so the water can flow. And he's speaking of that also, that new project on Fortification Street, that's how a lot of us get to the drugstore and, and other places, it's water-standing because the drainage is not being cleaned out on a regular basis. If we need to privatize and get private companies, because the money is budgeted for workers, but if we don't have the workers, let's get these private companies in here, because, you know, the first thing people ask us is where's the money? If it's budgeted and we don't have employees, then why we don't have employees? Why we not privatizing? Because we cannot watch trees growing up in this drainage system, whether it's Town Creek, U-Bridge Creek, you name it. And they not being cut out or cleaned out, then when the rain comes, you know, instructions are in the, in the drainage system. That's first thing. Second thing, Mr. President, at Town Creek near Reverend Williams Church, we don't know who did it, they have blocked Marlothie King Jr. Drive with two piles of dirt. Whether it's Jackson Water, City of Jackson, the county, whoever, somewhere down the line, they must get permission from the city. If the city didn't do it, I don't think anybody else had the authority to block the street. So the people been going around and coming through the church parking lot to get back on Marlothie King. So I hope that we can get some discussion later, because I, I know you're either one just concerning that, about how can people just come on the city streets that the city own and start blocking, even though they say the bridge might have issues, and still take permission from the city? Legan, I hope you will check before any entity can just come and block the city right away. Thank you.
Let me say this to help bring more color to this conversation than Mr. Hibbert Neal. I might ask you if you would come briefly. I want to commend the administration for the addition on the ICE Miller team of Mr. Stroud. All right? Because I think that they're doing a phenomenal job with helping to get some of our drainage addressed. And, and, and I was, I was up with them last week, and everything got in by that 12 noon Senate deadline on Wednesday, when it comes to Purple Creek, when it comes to the drainage, you know? And so I think, colleagues, when we talk about drainage, there are multiple approaches that we are all talking about. We're talking about Senate appropriations, we're talking about this $40 million budget. But I, I want to kind of guide this conversation, since it is my discussion item. What my thought in this was prioritizing those right-of-ways and streets that pose intimate, intimate danger. Like, for example, I've been emailing and talking about Forest Hill and Lakeshore. You gotta pull all the way up into Forest Hill Road to see what's coming, and we had seven accidents there in the past three months. And so I'm, I'm talking about those type of streets, you know, and the prioritization of those potholes. The pothole that was on Maddox Road in front of Mac Bowden's house that caused blowouts and caused three accidents in one day. Right? And, and a lot of it is just not on, you know, just even the lack of the public works director, but it's also has to do with just regular communication. Make sure that there's somebody that communicates with Atmos, that when they make a cut, y'all know? And keep their foot to the fire, because they responsible for putting that back right. They're responsible, Atmos is responsible for fixing that when they tear it up. You know, those, those type things and prioritize, because at the end of the day, what I don't like, and I don't think any councilmember likes, is for what I don't like, and I don't think any council member likes, is for them to get a complaint from a citizen about a street, and then two months later, there's a fatality or accident that happened because of that. So if there is a way to go and have someone on the public work staff, go and assess these, these streets, these stops, and these places where there is immediate danger, right? I think that's the priority. Yeah, let's do this. There's, I, I want to do sun crests and everything, but, but people having accidents right now in this street. So if we can get somebody to assess those things that could pose a danger, and that's why I put engineering in it, because that's what your traffic engineer is supposed to do. Supposed to help prevent those type of things from happening. Mr. Neal, if you would come at this time, sir, to go over, uh, those streets completed and those not complete. Thank you.
Councilman Banks.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead. Dr. Mar.
Yes, I would just like to say that it's important, that I, I know we contact individuals, but it's important that this goes into the three-one-one system so that we can have a mechanism for tracking and making sure that the work takes place.
Yeah, and, and to the point with the one that happened on Maddox Road, it wasn't in three-one-one, well, it, when it got in three-one-one, but Atmos made the cut. But if they made the cut and then they leave immediately after, it don't take long for that gravel to wash right back at that hole, and then that hole becomes deep, and then you hear boom, boom, all the time. It don't take long at all. And so I don't know if Atmos is supposed to be initiating conversation, you know what I'm saying, or if we just need to ride Atmos all the time, but they doing a lot of cuts. And I appreciate Jackson Water, too. They doing a lot of cuts, but it seem like the communication is very, very slow, you know, with letting us know, and then when we do find out, the worst thing already happened. And so I don't know if there could be any type of accountability to make sure they fix their stuff. All right, come on, Mr. Uh. Neil, Hibbit Neal. Uh, 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 I was gonna ask him what, what, what side of Jackson he grew up on, but I, I don't know, no need to do that. I just, I. You live, you live where?
I lived on Pecan Acres off of McClure Road for twenty-some odd years.
In South Jackson, right?
Yep.
All right, I just wanted for that, go ahead.
We had Citizen Southwest, and it was, it was, uh, it was an exciting time, but, uh.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, I, I appreciate your great opportunity to work with you on some of these, uh, streets as far as resurfacing. I'm Hibbit Neal, and this is our project engineer, Chad Tolls. Um, to give you a little background about the project that we're working on, several, I guess it was twenty-twenty-one, the city asked the neighborhood associations for a list of the worst streets that they wanted, that they needed to have resurfaced. So that came to the One-Cent Commission, and the, the commission decided to divide this into three contracts, uh, for the One-Cent, for resurfacing the worst streets. And it was noted at that time that there's a number of, of neighborhoods that don't have neighborhood associations that came up with the list, so this is certainly not complete. There are eleven hundred miles of streets, and we're only talking about, uh, maybe thirty miles that we're trying to resurface. You should have in front of you an up-to-date of the project that we have, uh, we have been working on. And as you see in green, these are the ones that we have finished, uh, resurfacing. And the way this was divided is that we took, uh, streets that were in general area, general geographic area, so that the contractor could work in a specific area. So it wasn't, uh, any, we weren't trying to divide it by wards, but by the areas that the neighborhoods asked for. So we had, we decided to do three contracts. We call it one A, one B, and one C. And the one A is about, uh, eleven miles, one B is eleven miles, and one C is, uh, nineteen miles. So the contract that we have been working on is, is one A. And you'll see in green that the projects, the streets that we have, we have finished and the ones that are remain to be finished. We also understand, understood that where the wa- there were waterline breaks when we went out, and we understood that when Jackson, uh, Water was going to go in and fix the waterlines, that they were going to resurface the streets.
That's right.
We later found out that wasn't the case. Unless they replaced the entire waterline, they were only going to do the spot repairs. Now, the, the streets that we did, uh, we were trying to get as many miles as we could with the money that we had for the resurfacing. So what we wanted to do as far as drainage, we wanted to, um, for, for it to be functional. There may have been cracked up, uh, curb and gutters, but the drainage projects, we did do some spot, uh, changes to it. We did some spot require, repairs to the streets, but we didn't replace the curbs, the majority of the curbs. So we, so what we have been asked by the One-Cent Commission was to come up with an estimate to replace the curbs for the one A. And we are, we're going to be coming to you for, uh, approval for that amount of money, as well as the ten streets that we have that are in blue, that are those streets that we thought Jackson Water was going to replace.
All right, thank you. Mr. Neal, are there any questions? Um, and Mr. Neal, no, thank you for, um, you know, bringing, you know, this forward and, and inviting. This was not, you know, we, we were aware of this, but more so there are so many different emergencies posed now all over the city of Jackson, this cause. So, so we know, this is not to say y'all ain't been doing streets. We just saying we need to prioritize some streets, right? All right, and so, um, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Lynch.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Neal, for all, all this great work. So what, one A is, looks like is nearly finished.
Yes.
Um, so when do you anticipate getting to the next two phases in this project?
Well, we have done an inventory of one B and one C and made estimates, but now we have to go back and figure out which ones are going to have to replace the curbs and gutters as the One-Cent Commission wanted to do. So that'll take about a month. But we should be advertising, and with a little bit of luck, we'll be able to, um, uh, start resurfacing B and C in August.
Thank you.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Neal, if it's possible for us to re-get or redeliver the copies of those streets that are prioritizing B and C, because remember, colleagues, one of the, and, and I thank you, and I appreciate you remembering this, we have no involvement in that process at all. Um, and, and we would like to know, because like my town hall is scheduled on the twenty-eighth with, uh, IMS to talk about the priorities in, in Ward Six. And so we need to be able to see that, because again, the council had no say-so in that process whatsoever. Yes, Councilwoman Lynch.
And these are the one percent sales tax.
No, I know, I know.
The thirty-eight million.
But you remember when, you remember when we got ready to do that? What I'm talking about was, they said that it, what was said was that constituent service was the preferred person to go out and contact with the neighbor associations to come up with the streets. And we had no say-so in that process whatsoever. That's what I was talking about, the process and coming up with the names of, or the streets that need to be done are prioritized. And there are certain streets that take priority now, or that may take priority, or there may be certain streets that Jackson Water is working on, you know, now that y'all might go out and do, and then they might come back out and tear up. So just for we, so we could be in the know, so the communication can take place. Go ahead, Councilwoman Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I, I wanted the same thing. I don't see any Ward Two streets and one A, so I wanted to see if we were in B or C. So I would like to see if, um, we could get a copy of that list so that I can make sure to share it with my neighborhood presidents.
Sure.
Yes, Council, I mean, Lord Jesus, Councilwoman.
Okay, so with, with regards to, uh, this project, we went to the community, and all of this took place in one percent sales tax commission meetings with, which are open to everyone, including the council. Um, so I, I would, I would say that if there was no input, it was because of a lack of participation, not because you were locked out of the process. Um, constituent services is also working with Mr. Wright on collecting and identifying streets that are in desperate need of resurfacing that may not be on the list that's being addressed by, uh, the one percent sales tax commission. What I think is important in this entire conversation is that we recognize that there are streams of funding that are being dedicated to addressing the most urgent issues that have been identified. For so long, the city has been moving from one crisis to another, which prevents you from having the opportunity to sit and plan, uh, particularly the water issue. Now that the water issue, now that the mayor went and got the money necessary for the water issue, uh, and, and Jackson Water is working to address those concerns, we can make plans to deal with the other urgent issues. So that's why the forty million dollars for the drainage, we have a, a source of funding for, uh, paved streets. So let's use this bond money on the drainage. We also understand that everybody has so many needs that need to be addressed immediately. And so we don't want to downplay, uh, the lack of regular maintenance. What we want to do is work on creating that regular maintenance. We don't want to downplay the potholes that may be dangerous, but we have to be aware of them so that we can, uh, put a plan in place to deal with them. So, um, I just, I just want to emphasize the importance. I want to, I want to thank, uh, Neal Schaefer for the work that they've been doing so far. The plan, uh, one B, one C, they, there are streets being paved all over the city. It's not just being concentrated in one area. And I think the mayor spent a lot of time explaining, uh, some kind of costs that occur when you have to move around. So they tried to concentrate everything in one spot, fix that, and move on. Uh, we, look, y'all, we just want to work with y'all to make sure all of this happens, okay?
Not to rehash the conversation for when this got approved, but let, let me just say, remember we talked about the preferred way when we got on the council? And the one percent sales tax commission said that they were going to do streets. And then Andrew Jenkins, who was the person, sent each council member a packet and said, go to your communities yourself and get with your communities and feel this out, have some dialogue and present this back. We had a time limit to do it. We gave it back to him, then it went before. We did that together. We didn't even know that she was going out, you know, and, and, and then not, and, and let me say this, no. No, we didn't, not to the last minute. And then our community people can't come to a one percent sales tax commission in the middle of the day. It's live stream. If they working, they working, Dr. Mar. But we have town halls, and all we're asking, and we ask, and the mayor said he would. All right, go ahead, Ms. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to thank, uh, Neal Schaefer for being here, giving us a list, because it's going to be, um, in our neighborhoods, streets is one of the most important issues that they're concerned about. Um, with the one percent sales tax commission, uh, I don't think, now, somebody, it may have changed, not a single council member is on that commission. Not one. And I've said over and over again, they were only supposed to give us a master plan. They were not supposed to select streets.
According to the legislation, that's right.
So they said, well, let's don't fight that fight, so I said, okay. So now we at a point where everybody ready to point the finger. And it's one of those situations where if we're going to work together, there should have been a council member on that one percent commission. That's important. The second most important thing is, why go to a meeting when you can't vote? That makes absolutely no sense. Here you are, council member expressing your concerns, but when it's time to vote, you can't vote. That's why I've been, and that's why I'm not going. I don't know about other council members. Give me an authority to vote, put a council member on that commission. I believe the council members would vote for them. We not going to waste our time just going there and hearing rhetoric. You got some wards don't even have a representation on this committee. Some wards, I ain't say, how can you select streets and allow this one percent coming from poor neighborhoods that I represent, and we have no voice? You not on this commission? That's how you select things and others are left out? Put some members of this council on that committee. I've said it over and over again, let's follow the law. They do a master plan, that's it. Council's supposed to be doing a lot of this, selecting streets.
That's right.
And we don't get a chance to do none. We come here and talk. And I'm concerned, because the mayor keeps saying, we using this forty million for drains. These council members told me, we're going to be able to select streets, we pass legislation, we're going to pave streets. And we keep hearing, that's not going to happen. So as these citizens keep saying, when my street going to get paid? Only thing we can say, it ain't going to happen. So, Mr. Neal, we thank you for coming. I know we only got four of the streets that we have on this list, and you got seven wards. And when you do the math, that mean that a lot of wars not getting anything done. I hate to drive down Marlothic King. It's embarrassing to say his name, Dr. Dr. King. Street need to be paved so badly. And there's streets all over this city in different wards. Shouldn't look like that around Jackson State University, even the Parkway. Yeah, it took, you know, it, it makes no sense. And they tell us over and over again, why have black people downtown if you ain't gonna do nothing? Y'all ain't bringing home no bacon? We got more done when we was all white. That's what they tell us. I'm gonna say it loud, I ain't scared. So again, we need to go back, get legal to do their job, and let's follow the law. Let's follow the law. If one percent was only supposed to do the master plan, then get out the business of running this other stuff. That was not your responsibility. The city council's supposed to have these decisions, and we not making them. We not even on the board. We can't even vote, and we letting this happen to us. It's a shame. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Lynch.
Uh, since we're talking about one percent sales tax commission, uh, Mr. Wright, a couple of years ago, we got the intersection by Callaway approved for sidewalks and street lights, uh, traffic lights. Can you send me a memo on where we are with that? I would like to see that done before the end of my term. Thank you.
All right, it, it, yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Neal.
Forgive me, I didn't make copies of phase one B and C that you asked for, and I can pass this around, and maybe you can make copies for them.
Just give it to.
If you give it to the clerk, she'll, she'll make, she'll make sure we hear it.
Okay, thank you very much.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. David.
All right, any, any other questions or comments on those discussions? Thank you, all colleagues. That is that bar's discussion thirty-three and thirty-four. Uh, let's go, oh, let's, let's do this. Uh, I want to go and do this, so, so we take care of this. There's, there's an emergency item that we need to go ahead and take care of. Um, it is time-sensitive. This is actually a grant that has been awarded. Uh, and this grant actually goes out, um, uh, to, uh, make sure we helping to mitigate homeless situations. Uh, Catholic Charity Stupod, uh, Born to Lead, uh, Voice of Cavalry Ministries. Um, and, uh, the city received the one hundred and forty, and we distribute it to, um, those, uh, uh, organizations uh, as we try to support all the time. So I would need a motion in a second to add this to the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we add an order authorizing the mayor to execute contracts between the city of Jackson and various organizations for the use of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two Emergency Solutions Grant for a total of one hundred and forty thousand. Uh, all in favor of adding? All in favor of adding any sense of emergency?
I'm going to pause there, Mr. President.
All right, Ms. Stokes, this is time sensitive.
Mr. President, I, I know it's not on the floor to discuss.
Right.
But I am concerned about the increase in homeless and others that we begin to see in neighborhoods throughout this city. I believe that certain neighborhoods have been overrun with homeless. And a lot of the homeless not, people being dropped off, many of them just on dope. And we got to draw the line somewhere. These organizations, if they're going to help cure this problem, they can't just take money from the city for administrative costs. And we should have some kind of plan as to what's going to happen in a certain period of time so we can have some benchmarks. Right now, we just doing money at a problem that's growing more and more out of control.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just, just let me say this real quick and then mayor brief, because we don't have enough to know the floor. But let me just say this in, in response, and having some conversations with interim director Keaton, he is working on a plan, and I trust that he would deliver to hold these organizations accountable to making sure that, that there's proper use. He's even been doing the right research to get a proper count of how many, what our true homeless population is. Go ahead.
Y'all are definitely getting those words from me. Those have been in a lot of articles lately. The homeless count and disaggregating that day.
Well, I ain't talk to you, I talked to him.
I got you.
So he got it from you.
He got it from me, all right.
All right.
But, but to the point, to the point of that, Councilman Stokes, first, I want to acknowledge that, that your concern in making sure that, that it isn't just for administrative costs and that there are actual benchmarks, and not talking about any specific organization, but I think, I think we need to acknowledge that that is a valid concern, right? Not saying that there isn't well-intentioned work, but we need to make certain that the work that is happening is happening in a coordinated way, that it is happening in an effort that, that helps achieve the objective of addressing our unhoused condition and population. And so that's what we're trying to achieve. Absent the funding and absent the support, then what we do know is that we won't be any closer to that objective today. And so I would ask for your support in this. I will commit that, that as we go forward with what we have as a functional zero objective of homelessness, that we, we report those things. We had a, a meeting with Councilman Hartley a few months back where he was, you know, just pointing out the challenges that he had with, with the unhoused population and their need for services within his community and where that, where that lies, the, the areas where those challenges lie within his ward. We sat down in the office and looked at a map, and he was telling us where people often congregate and where those challenges are. And so I, I think that if we want to be successful for, with this, that there's no way we can be successful without working hand in hand. But I think that this funding is critical to, to achieving that goal.
Because I don't, I don't want, you know, I know I don't like being improper. Can we get this on the floor for discussion at least?
We did not add it to the agenda.
Yeah, it had to be added to the agenda for us to continue discussing this.
Okay.
But if some, yeah, I, 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 no, I'll, I'll call for it again later. Let me get some information. If I can get what the hard deadline is, this is, I think the importance, and correct me if I'm wrong, the importance of this is, this is 2022 ESG monies, and before we have to send it back or something like that, we need to go ahead and make sure that we expend it. So if I can get the hard deadline and then upon getting that, I'll bring it back up for reconsideration. Is that okay, colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Banks.
Go ahead, go ahead briefly.
I would ask that administration perhaps be prepared to give us an update on the other housing issue as well regarding homelessness. I think we allocated up to almost $3 million to Jackson Resource Center, and I would love to get an, an update on that, the tiny houses and so forth. Not now, but when it comes back in order. But I do not intend to support this along with my colleague, Councilman Stokes.
All right. Let's go to item nine.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, ordering the Jackson Police Department to impound and the City of Jackson to acquire title to any vehicles involved in drive-by shootings in the City of Jackson.
Sumo.
Uh, second. Legal, did you get a chance to do your homework on this? That side says you understaffed.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. So this came up at a recent committee meeting, and so there's a state statute that governs this already. So what I would, what I would suggest is that an ordinance, I don't think would have any impact on what the statute already allows and permits, which is a pretty detailed process by which the police can take a civil forfeiture of any vehicles used in this sort of situation. There's a petition that has to be filed either by the district attorney's office or a representative thereof. JPD has the ability to, to follow that process, and Legal has the ability to assist them through that process. But the ordinance itself would simply be redundant for what the state already allows. And I'm not sure we could do it over and above what the state procedure is anyway.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you so much, Legal. And I think the president has an amendment he wanted to make. But we must do something about these drive-by shootings. And Councilmember Lee asked about if the vehicle is stolen. Now, we understand that we can't punish an innocent person whose car has been stolen, but we may, we need to make sure that there's no games being played. If the car stolen, it need to be reported stolen. And it can't be reported stolen after someone drove by and shot somebody's house up. So, you know, it's important, and if we got state law, let's do what we need to do to, we can't supersede state law, we know that.
Right.
But we got to start letting the, these copycats and others know that we coming at you with this drive-by shooting. It's too much drive-by shooting taking place in Jackson, too many people being hurt. Some of them are blessed by God that when they doing the drive-by, it's just tearing up the house and shooting up the house. We got to make an effort in anything we can do to send the message that if you allow your child to take your car, go do drive-by shooting, we coming to get your car. Don't start telling us about where I was sleeping, I was at work, you know what this child doing. We cannot sit down or lay down and allow, and allow these drive-by shootings to become a common thing in Jackson, Mississippi.
Agreed. Councilman, what, what we've done internally, it's not clear to me that, well, it is clear to me that Legal hasn't been providing the support to JPD. I'm not sure if JPD's been doing it on their own. But we started using the state statute. We're developing sort of an internal communication we can use with JPD that when they have this arrest, they communicate it to us, we communicate with the DA's office, get the petition filed. And to your point, the statute puts the burden on the vehicle owner to prove that they didn't know once the vehicle is used in that sort of crime. So, so to, to address exactly what you're talking about there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We read for the amendment.
All right, thank you, Councilman Stokes. Colleagues, this is my motion, that we add a third whereas, third whereas. And it, it'll be, it'll be added to the third, that whereas would say, whereas according to whatever the section is, Drew. You got it? Make sure you get the clerk is according.
I get it, sir.
All right. According to section blah, 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 the Jackson City Council hereby encourages the district attorney and all existing powers to file petition when such a crime happens.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded on the amendment, all in favor. All right, now we have item on the floor as amendment. That, does that cut the mustard?
Yes, as long as it's clear that we're not superseding or attempting to supersede state law.
Absolutely.
All right.
Do we need to put language in there? We will not try to supersede state law.
No, I think the encouragement, the encouragement to the city to follow the statute and encourage the DA to follow it, I think works. Yes, sir.
All right, one, one more minute, one more amendment, sensitive, it goes along with the section. In, after the last whereas, add a therefore before the therefore, it is hereby ordered, add therefore, a copy of this shall be provided to the district attorney's office. Is that it? Is that the power of the petition, the district attorney, or is it another?
The authority is through the district attorney or his designated.
All right, through the district attorney's office. All right, that's it.
That's the need.
All right.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. We add that. Any questions or comments?
Yes, just to make sure while we are adding amendments, is there any other outside groups, nonprofits, or anything that would look to kind of weigh in on this or, or, or look at it as maybe a problem?
I don't think so. And again, not only is it already state law, so I think we're safe as long as, essentially the ordinance is saying, let's, let's follow that state law and let's make sure that it's being pursued. And for what it's worth, you know, this is an issue that, that local municipalities across the country are taking more active roles in civil forfeitures of property used in committing crimes, and frankly, some have used it as, have generated quite a bit of revenue by doing so.
Thank you.
All right. Any, do we vote, all in favor of the amendment? All right, that's the second amendment. Now we have the item on the floor is amended twice. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right, congratulations, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you.
Item carries unanimously. All right, let's go ahead, let's move to claims, 10.
Order proving claims appearing at pages 053 to inclusive their own on the municipal docket of claims in the amount of $3,738,984.85 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Sumo, second.
Let's move a proper second, this item, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Larger claims.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, yeah, Mr. Malinbeck.
Yes. Good morning. Fidelis Malinbecka, CFO. I will go over the four largest claims on this docket, and they are as follows. The first is Hemp Hill Construction in the amount of $636,856.31 paid out of Fund 157, 1% infrastructure tax. This is for the Riverside Drive improvements. Second is Tyler Technologies in the amount of $357,555.60 paid out of Fund 4 Technology Fund. This is for the Muni Support and Update Licensing. Third is Entergy in the amount of $353,754.42 paid out of Fund 1 General Fund. This is for street lighting. And the fourth is Metro Jackson Convention in the amount of $317,552.37 paid out of Fund 203, Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is the payment for Visitors Bureau for May 2024 taxes.
All right, that is all the large claims. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Yes, Councilwoman Lee?
Mr. Malinbecka, I'm looking at about three pages of Michael's Mobile Auto. Can you tell me, what are we getting detailed, or what is this expense?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if some are from JPD. Do you have the specifics?
What, what page is that on?
62, 63, 64, and some on 65.
This mobile detailing?
This is Sergeant Michael's Special Assistant.
Hey, 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 Attorney Michael.
Is the vendor's Michael, Michael's auto returned in recognition? What is the vendor name again?
Michael's Mobile Auto.
Captain Michael Allen, Jackson Police Department. That's one of the tow services for the city.
That's the point.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
I, I think the concern when they first saw it was that it wasn't car wash, it wasn't a detail service being provided, being provided. So we are making sure that we charge what the council suggested in terms of towing service in the city, correct?
Correct. So we do have a number of companies that are part of the contracts that were approved by the city council. And obviously, Ms. Sandra Monkure actually does verify, right? So she checks the minutes, and then of course compares the contracts and the invoices that are being processed. So she gives it legal sufficiency before it is approved.
What's the customer, so what's the cap amount that we set by ordinance on toll?
I thought it was 75.
It is.
So I think there's a variation. If you can, if you can speak to, to that.
It's a difference. City vehicles are 75, but for all other vehicles, they say for, it's 100. And that's what's in the contract.
If, if I'm not mistaken, the ordinance says not to exceed $75 for all towing.
Period.
Legal, if you can go look at that.
Thanks.
Yes. Okay.
Michael's Special Assistant. So I, when I reviewed this, the only thing I had is what's in the minutes and what's in the rotation agreement. I wasn't aware of the ordinance. There's something that we will probably have to review and look at that again, but the amount that's authorizing the order and agreement is, is the amount that's reflected before you while on the claims document.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand, and, and that's proper as far as order, but we cannot do anything that supersedes our own ordinance. All right, go ahead, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is, the, my understanding was that $75 would be paid by the owner of the car. So why does it show up on the claims docket for us to pay?
I think we charge them when they come pick it up, I think.
What, so there should be a, the net should show up somewhere where we, if we're getting repaid or paid back, where does that show up? And, and that just seems, I just, you know, explain that, how the process works?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the revenue portion, and I have to get the specific account number that tracks the revenue that comes in. I'll, I'll look it up before the end of the meeting and I'll.
I'd be curious what the net that we're actually paying. You know, if we're just paying $75 for every tow and then we get, get paid back when they pick up their car, I think the council would, we need to know, you know, what the net payout is, you know, receipts versus later payments, or payouts versus, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Councilman Stokes, just to help, this was your ordinance, right?
Years ago.
And this when all the tow companies and everybody was lined up in the chamber?
Yeah.
I remember that. That, that might be 2017, 2018, somewhere up in there.
I think we had an amendment after that because the companies start wanting to do what they wanted to do, charge people 150 and more, and then since it wasn't a contract. And I think the police department through the preacher son, he was with the police department, I think he's, might be still there.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I vaguely remember, but if, do you remember when they had that game, or there was these towing companies that were just going around, that was towing all these cars? And then all those towing companies came in here, that's when we changed that. Yeah, yeah. What's, 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 what's the wish? Yeah, do, Legal, are you checking on this? Come on to the mic, Williamson.
So.
Mike.
Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. My recollection is. My recollection is that y'all passed an order that set the amount. But, but the ordinance has to deal, the, the ordinance itself has to deal, has to deal with, um, vehicles that are abandoned or whatever and, and making reports to the city about towed vehicles. That's what the ordinance addresses. It doesn't address any sort of fee. I think there's a separate order. I mean, like the wrecker rotation, which is just an order. I mean, that's not a, that's not a city ordinance. So we would have to do some research to get that from the municipal clerk's office.
Counsel.
Yes, sir. The, uh, what we had was a ordinance, and we ran into the situation where the towing companies, a few of them started saying that, uh, the contract had expired. So we made sure we had another contract that included the amount that we were gonna charge and everything else about reporting and how you get on the list, how they'll put you off the list. Now, to be on the list to tow was a privilege. It wasn't anything that was mandatory by the city to put you on there. But what we running into is towing companies not want to abide by the price that the city council said you could charge. Poor people can't pay those high amounts. So what happened, you ended up, poor people ended, ended up losing their automobiles because the company would tow them. Once they get them towed to their lot, they couldn't pay to get it out, and consequently, they took Tyler of people cars. It was seventy-five dollars a tow. Towing companies want to say, well, they getting paid more in other cities and counties. That might be so, but Jackson set an amount. So what you have now is people not wanting to follow the law that the city council set for this city. And if they do not want to tow in Jackson, it's no gun put in anyone's head. They say, you must tow here. But we must make sure we safeguard people who cannot afford to retrieve their automobile back. And that's why we put standards on how much they could charge. Thank you.
All right. Council President, uh, and Councilman Stokes, so, so this was before my time, but I know I have some knowledge of this. I, I can't find an ordinance that specifically addresses rates. Um, what Mr. Williamson advised, it, it does appear to be what's in the ordinances. Last year, uh, the city entered into some negotiations with a couple of, um, I'll call them nonprofits, but legal groups that were, uh, questioning some towing practices within the city. And eventually, a contract was negotiated that addresses a lot of what Councilman Stokes is, is, is asking about here. Uh, the contract was, this is gonna be the city's contract for towing. If you want to do business with the city of Jackson, you're gonna have to agree to these rates. The only difference or the only discrepancy I can see is the rates that, that the council is citing are slightly different than what ultimately went into this contract. As, as JPD just reported, the, the contract calls for a flat rate for city-owned cars, vans, et cetera, of seventy-five dollars. Um, other cars, eighty-five dollars. Abandoned vehicles and/or stolen vehicles, a hundred dollars. And there's also a category for all toes where the owner or driver is arrested are limited to eighty-five dollars. There's also provisions in this that go to, uh, what storage fees can and should be permitted, um, and, and recovery fees and so forth. And all of that is now required for anybody that wants to do towing business within the city of Jackson. They had to, they had to agree to this contract.
All right, I, I, look, I, 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 I remember this process. I even remember it, it involved Dot Benford in her, uh, the late Dot Benford, I remember the process.
Mr. West?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I remember all of that. Um, I'm, I'm not comfortable. One, I do have a problem when there's not enough legal, and I know this is before you. When there's not enough legal research done, when somebody goes and negotiates a contract over and above what the council had set as ordinance, because we can't set contracts beyond our state law. So I'm not, I mean, beyond our law. So I'm not comfortable with doing this. So I'll make a motion, so that I'll support claims, uh.
And Banks? Is it okay that I'm, I'm, um, looking at the ordinance now just for the record? I don't see a fee set in the ordinance either. I just want to make that clear.
Wha- what's page fifteen? Okay, all right. All right, yeah, give, give, give the clerk some time because I know that there is a time lapse between even when some of our stuff is codified, um, and, and that's when we have to go in there. And look, Shanika, did you find it? Is that it? That's it?
What the clerk has found is an order that's dated, dated April sixteenth, twenty nineteen, uh, and, and that the council passed, and the order includes, uh, a chart, uh, for towing rates within the city for city-initiated towing. Um, and these rates are more in line with what the city council is recalling, including abandoned vehicles and/or stolen vehicles, seventy-five dollars. Toes where owner drivers arrested, seventy-five dollars. Uh, city-owned cars, forty-five dollars. Uh, it wasn't an ordinance. It looks like it's an order passed in two thousand and nineteen.
But the order still is to the police department to abide by. All right, so, uh, I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, remove those items.
Second.
All right, let's move.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
I see Hicks Towing is also charging a hundred dollars. So we need to do a thorough.
Anything that's reflecting against what the order of this council is, remove it.
I'm gonna have another question.
Okay, all right. Let, let me get this one done first. There's a motion and a second to remove those. All in favor? All right, all opposed? Everybody was unanimous? I see you there. Okay. Vote. Councilman Foot, how you vote?
I vote in favor.
In favor? All right, it's unanimous. All right, uh, so now we have claims on the floor as amended.
Uh, so, Mr. Martin, are we gonna go back and look at all of the charges that are over seventy-five dollars from two thousand and nineteen to now that we've been overcharged for?
It looks like we should, and we'll need to reexamine the contract that was centered into last year as well.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Martin, I'm also, and Mr. Malinbeck, I'm looking at claims, and I see, uh, something for Tori Parker Martin. Is she still on employee payroll? And if so, I see three charges or three payments going to her and wondering why it's not on payroll.
Say Tori Parker?
Mm-hmm, page thirteen.
Who's Tori Parker? Sorry, if you.
Tori Parker Martin?
Is that, is that?
I don't know if that's her middle name. I don't know. Who was that?
Is that our former attorney or is that someone else? Thirteen in the claims docket?
No, page thirteen, I have, uh, Divini Equipment.
Yeah, that's what I have. Which one are you looking at? Are you in payroll already?
Oh, you're looking at.
Oh, you're in payroll. Okay. All right, all right. So that's. We, we good? Okay. So that's claims as amended. Uh, all in favor, uh, any, any other questions or comments? All in favor of claims as amended? All opposed? All right, claims fail. All right, um, payroll.
Order proving gross payroll, including payroll deductions, claims number three zero two six nine, to and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
Sum of second.
Let's move a property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
All right.
So, Mr. Malinbeck, are we still, is this, is this our former attorney?
You know, I mean, I, I cannot tell by that name. Obviously, it says Tori Parker. I don't know if Tori is, uh.
I know it's Catoria Martin. I don't know if it's the same.
Yeah, Catoria. It, it's Catoria, but, yeah, I, I don't know, uh, the, the Tori Parker. So that's a different employee.
Official name of former employee?
Knowing the system, uh, shows in as Catoria, so that, you know, that's different. And we can research, uh, specifically who that employee is. But that's part of the insurance, insurance payment.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, any questions or comments? All in favor of payroll? Oppose?
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right, item carries five, one. You, you.
No, I've already voted yes.
Okay, yeah, item carries five, one. All right, uh, item twelve. I'm sorry, Mr. Dickman. Oh, I'm sorry, you got something?
Mr. Banks, I'd like to reconsider claims. Someone might need to take a walk.
I'll do it at the end of it.
Okay.
All right, okay. So, uh, we'll, we'll hold, we'll hold that motion. Item twelve.
Order reappointing Susan Garrett to the Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau as the Attractions Industry Representative.
Sum of second.
Let's move a property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I guess just more of a statement. I think that it's important that we tell the convention and visitors bureau that they make a hard job look easy. You know, they doing a whole lot trying to help push this city and a lot of different roadblocks. They don't let it block them or stop them. Guess it's good to tell them to keep up the good work. But it's time for us to get a hotel. Time for us to get the convention center hotel. Let's get away from whoever blocking the highway is being blocked. Let's move these roadblocks out the way. It's, it's been too, too long. You know, we gave up property many years ago that we had to buy back from a company in Dallas who was gonna put up the hotel. And we have taken the position that we don't care, we're not gonna do anything. It's every city, every major city in this country, when you have a convention center, you have a convention center hotel. And they had a beautiful plan for one. And it fell through the cracks many years ago, and we just have not tried to seal up those cracks. But I hope someone will start making the commitment to the Convention Center Hotel and Jackson State New Football Stadium. Dion left and everything got quiet. And it's gonna take the Convention Bureau to start speaking up because you're not gonna have enough money and the city not gonna be able to keep funding your shortfalls. So you need to do things to make sure you have enough money that you can stand alone and independent. And that would be your hotel and the stadium for Jackson State. Thank you.
Well, I hope that the, uh, person that happens to be an alumni of Valley State heard you clearly. All right, uh, all, any, any other questions on this confirmation? All in favor? All right, item carries unanimously. All right, uh, colleagues, let's, let's try to push through this. All right, item thirteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement and an amended quoted price agreement with James and Associates LLC to provide grant management administrative services for the city of Jackson.
Sub move.
Item dies for lack of second. Item fourteen.
Order authorizing payment to Automation Designs and Solutions, Inc. for two-finger Pro ID Kiosk Systems to support the Jackson Police Department's identification system.
Sum of second.
All right, let's move a property second on item fourteen. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the Department of Information Technology to procure a credit card purchasing system provided by Global Payments Direct, Inc. in accepting the card services, terms and conditions for government entities.
Sub move. Second.
All right, let's move a property second on this, uh. All right, any questions or comments? Yes.
The, um, we're, um, my question is, is if there's somebody here can answer, I don't know who, proper questions to. The dollar amounts here are listed, but then the credit card companies, they make the, what, three percent or so on all the charges. So is this stuff in addition? So what, what are we paying for? And, um, the, explain the difference in the revenues because there's like a three percent revenues that goes to credit card companies. What, what's the, how much is this organization getting paid?
Maria Reed, Information Technology. We are not receiving or giving any money. Every time a customer swipes their card, they are charged three point five percent. And that's the charge that goes to the company.
But these other things say, I, I guess my question was, it says twelve purchased, eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
That's for the, that's for the physical equipment.
So we have to pay for that?
Correct.
But then the, the, as much as they're making, I was hoping the equipment would come, they'd give us the equipment or lease, lease it to us or something. So we gotta pay for the equipment.
There is.
Credit card companies all the money.
There is a purchase price and then there's a lease price. So you have two options.
Which one are we doing?
So how, why we got both of them here? Which, which, are we voting on one or the other?
Depending on the department, the department will pay for their own equipment.
So this is giving the city access to, so we'll, I'm sorry.
No, I would, I mean, so, but we don't know. In other words, it's got twelve purchased equals eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Or twelve leased is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Is that, maybe that's the same amount of amount? And that wouldn't be the same amount of money. How do we know what the cost is if, if the departments make up their mind after later? So it's our, we don't know what the total dollar amount's gonna be.
So we do have a representative that's assigned to us, and we will work all that out. You know, if a department wants to do leasing, then that department will get a leasing agreement. If they want to buy it straight out, then they buy it straight out.
Okay, so how many different units are we gonna buy or, or get, you know, agree to take?
Uh, to my knowledge, I think it's about ten.
I know at one time, um, the zoo was saying that they didn't have the ability to take credit cards. Would they be able to tap into this as, as well?
Right, they're included.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, here none other. All in favor? Oppose? All right, item carries five, one. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Parliament Corporation for Professional Services, for professional IT services for the Department of Information Technology.
All right, it's been moving properly second on this item. Uh, any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilman Harley.
Yeah, Dr. Reed, um, can you give a thirty-second blurb on what this actually is and how it's gonna benefit the public?
The move from the library downtown, the engineers will, on this contract, will actually be performing that work. Moving our equipment, IT equipment from the library to another location, which would be telecommunications.
Okay, so this will allow just a continuity in information flow?
Right.
Okay.
So if we don't get our equipment out of ELC, then, you know, we'll be down for a while.
Okay, and, uh, my other question is this. Munis.
Yes.
When is city council gonna have access to public information through munis?
When are you gonna have access in munis?
Yes.
Well, you have to request it through the administration.
Okay. All right, uh, any, go ahead.
No.
You need this equipment to move, right?
Correct.
All right, any other questions or comments?
So where is the equipment gonna be moved to?
Telecommunications.
Where is, I don't even know where telecommunications is. Where is?
On Riverside Drive across the street from the RTCC building.
On, far from the R, RTCC, the O, ROTC building?
RTCC building.
RT.
On Riverside Drive. They're across the street from each other.
Oh, the Real Crime Crime Center, okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain. All right.
I do want to put on record, if we don't move our equipment, then we'll be in major trouble if we don't move it.
Oh, would you, in what way? Because again, uh, look, we've been kicking a can, beating up a horse concerning this munis issue. City council having access to, uh, to, to public information. No information, your department, no information is of a private nature. It's all public. And when we deem something necessary for the, for the. And when we deem something necessary for the, for the benefit of our citizens and to do our job, we need access to that information. No games. Okay, just as things are important to you, it's important to us as well. We're all about getting on with the people's business. So please, whatever impediment there is to this Munis thing, let's get on with it. All right.
Uh, Councilman, I don't play games like that.
Okay, then where, where is the stoppage at then?
If you make the request, we'll look at the request. Everything is not open to everyone.
Okay. Dr. Omar.
Uh, I, so we will be losing a lot of our access to internet and all of those things if they don't move your equipment. So I just, I just wanted to be clear, when, when the city goes down, where the responsibility lies.
Well, the city council has a legal authority to financial access and it's been denied. We did make requests, they were approved, but it was pulled because someone gave instruction for not to be.
Because there was a blanket approval that everybody does not need access to the city's systems.
Clerk, item 17.
Order requesting ratification of previously performed security monitoring services performed at the Grove, Grove Park Golf Course in approving payment to Safe Watch Security Systems.
Sub move.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Let the record reflect that there's a quorum of five. Next item.
Order ratifying past servicing and repair work performed by an approving payment to Land Golf and Turf LLC for completed servicing and repairs to a city-owned Jacobson LF 570 mower located at the Pete Brown Golf Facility totaling $13,731.08
Second. It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Push.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to offer an amendment to this item.
All right, what's the amendment?
Um, the, the item says, um, approving payment to Land Golf and Turf for completed servicing repairs to A city-owned Jacobson mower. There's actually three Jacobson mowers that were repaired by the three invoices that add up to the 13,000. So I'd like to change, I'd like to amend the A, where it says repairs to A city, to three. And there's any, if there's any other mentions in the, um, order here referring to a single mower or to a mower, that needs to be also reflected as three mowers that were repaired for this 13,000.
Second.
All right, it's been moving property second. Any questions or comments on the amendment? All in favor? All right, item just now on the floor as amended, uh, all in favor of the item? Dr. Mohammed, it ain't off the floor yet. Uh, you got a question?
Dr. Mohammed.
Thank you.
You got a question? The item's on the floor as amended.
Doc.
I'm sorry.
Um.
April Mohammed Parks, I'm ready.
Swimming pools.
Yes, sir.
We understand a young man in Clinton, Maryland drowned. How many of our pools will be open? Uh, I think school last week is this week. How many will be open?
Yes, sir, we have a total of four. That's two more than we had last year. That would be Mill Street, Vine Street, Grove Park, and VA Pool. We also have two splash pads, which will be at the zoo and our main splash pad at Presidential Hill. And the sprinkle pad, uh, which has not been in operation in about 10 years, will be up at Lake Highco. So we have a total of seven water activities to be offered this year. That's four up from last year.
Uh, I had a, I had a conversation with, uh, Operation Shoestring, about Mary Jones Center Pool.
Yes, sir.
And the possibility of shoestring and some churches coming together, working together to get Mary Jones up. Could you open the lines of communication with LIGA and, and, uh, those organizations? So that, I think this is about the third or fourth year that Mary Jones have been closed.
Yes, sir.
That we can get everybody in the, on, on the same page.
Be happy to, yes, sir.
To, uh, make sure that might not be timely for this year. But next year, we can have Jones back up and going and some kind of agreement between the city and these organizations and the churches where we can make the necessary repairs. I'm still concerned about people who were going over the fence into those pools who can't swim.
Yes, sir.
And I know you said we got to have water in there, the pools will collapse.
Yes, sir.
But we must put some kind of, I'm afraid of the cover because they'll go under the cover. Some kind of patrol that'll go in there routinely every hour to, uh, make sure that these youngsters understand, do not go into the pool. It's unsafe. Do not use it. Some who can swim will take others who can't swim.
Right.
And encourage them to do it, and that's how they end up drowning. So, uh, could we, number one, open the lines of communication with Operation Shoestring?
Absolutely.
And, uh, number two, can we find some kind of state mechanism to make sure that these pools that's closed gonna be off limits for, uh, young people who will drop the fence?
Uh, yes, sir. First of all, I, I welcome the lines of communication with Operation Shoestring. Uh, please, I'll be eagerly awaiting their call, uh, so we can look to see how we can collaborate together to, to, uh, offer, uh, pool services at Mary C. Jones as well as we have, uh, with other entities and organizations that we doing with Mill Street, which is a wonderful, wonderful collaboration that we have going on. So we can definitely do that with them. And I'll work, uh, speak more with JPD to see how can we beef up, uh, routine patrols, uh, with our park ranges to see an effort of, of more of what we can be able to do there and continue to research and see how we make and fortify, um, our pool areas to make it less accessible to be able to get in.
Do we have cameras there currently? Or do we need to put some cameras up so that we can?
We do not currently have cameras there. Uh, of course, that, that would always, uh, can be an electronic enhancement, uh, that can, uh, that can assist, but we still would need some more physical barriers that could possibly prevent some things there. And I'll continue to research that to see what we can do.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. All in favor of this item? All right, item carries, uh, unanimously. We have a quorum of five still. Uh, let's go to item 27. Clerk.
Order authorizing the mayor to reappoint Brian Washington to the Jackson Redevelopment Authority, JRA Board.
Sub move.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Uh, colleagues, let me just kinda give the rundown. This was placed on the agenda. Uh, and, um, uh, after being placed on agenda, we put it on committee to give opportunity for conversation at the, uh, request of the mayor. Uh, and it's, it's been about two weeks. Uh, we passed this out of committee yesterday. Um, I had some further conversation with the mayor and expressing the concern to council. Concern to council is that, uh, this seat has been, uh, this term expired August of '23. And, um, and so now we are at a place where we have to, um, ensure that there's representation for Ward Five. The mayor has asked, uh, again, for additional time, uh, to, uh, have the time to speak, uh, with Mr. Washington because this is his appointment. And, um, what I wanted to do is since there has been some time and I know that there's importance after talking to JRA members, uh, because they have a meeting today at four, and then they have a meeting tomorrow. And so what I'm going to allow colleagues, if, uh, there are comments and things that people would like to say on the record about the performance of B. Wash, or if there are any members of JRA here that would like to speak, uh, on behalf of the performance of JRA. It is my understanding, even we're talking with the new executive director, uh, that, um, he is a valuable and intimate part of conversations, and we would like to ensure these are part of those conversations. Uh, and so I want to give an opportunity for those comments to be made on the record. And hopefully, um, we can get to a place where whatever discussions or whatever reasons uh, can be discussed and done in a manner, um, so that the reasons why I won't get to a place of being an embarrassment. I'll let you come, John.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, for letting me speak.
Good night.
Uh, my name is John Harrison York. I represent Ward Seven on the JRA Board of Commissioners. Uh, and I am here today to talk on behalf of Brian Washington. Um, y'all confirmed myself and Mr. Washington, uh, on the same day, um, a couple of years ago. And I can say, uh, Mr. Washington has been an unbelievable board member. Uh, having served on several volunteer board members, not, or boards in my life, uh, none of which have been compensated. Uh, Mr. Washington falls into the rare category of someone who, um, dedicates unbelievable amounts of time, incurs expenses out of his own pocket. I mean, he's showing up to Union Station fixing locks and other things that are broken of his own accord and with his own people and, and not getting reimbursed whatsoever. He is truly an exemplar, uh, member of our board, and it would be a, a shame to lose him. We're also, um, only at six members right now, and we have to have four to have quorum. And, you know, with things that happen, it is essential to have really high-quality board members, uh, from our standpoint, um, who can also be there and be present. He doesn't miss meetings. He's been terrific. So I would just ask, um, for the, the council to, to seriously consider, uh, reappointing him. He's been fantastic.
Uh, colleagues, I'll give you opportunity. We'll start with you, uh, and, and let me just say, I, we know that this is the mayor's appointment, we respect. But then also, um, I know how it feels when your ward is left without representation, especially when we have so many urban renewal zones. And the majority of the urban renewal zones are in Ward Five. Go ahead, Mr. Harley.
Yes, uh, I'd like to speak also in, in behalf of, uh, Mr. Washington, Commissioner. Uh, look, a lot of times, we have to pull, drag, beat, whatever, uh, to get folks on boards and commissions. And then a lot of times, when they get on there, sometimes they just sit in place. We have a member from Ward Five that's on the board, and by the testimony of his peers, is doing an outstanding job. And Ward Five constituents are concerned about, why isn't this person being reappointed? Just what is the, what is the issue here? We know that there's a preference, but we're sending our best and brightest to this board, and this man is making a difference. And so we want some answers if, uh, if we can't, you know, uh, again, we still support Mr. Washington being on the board. Uh, we support the, the activities he's doing. We support the leadership he's showing on the board. Uh, you know, the transparency, everything. And in a time where we're sorely looking for people to work free, bring their expertise, uh, their time, even their money, to do, uh, jobs that, you know, that, uh, they're not being compensated in any way, then what is the problem? Just what is the problem with that person maintaining that board status? And, um, you know, I, I just don't see it. But, uh, we, we thank Mr. Washington, and thank you so much for coming and sharing your testimony about, uh, about one of your peers.
Absolutely, and happy to say anything else on, on his behalf. He's been truly fantastic, and it would be a huge loss, especially as JRA is finally starting to get some positive momentum here and doing some good things. We don't wanna lose him.
All right, any, any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. You know, Mr. President, you hear so many negative things about, um, Mississippi and racism and race relations, and I don't know this gentleman. I really don't think I know Mr. Washington. But it just show the, um, links where blacks and whites are working together, trying to make the community better for everybody, especially their children and, and grandchildren to live and to prosper in this city. Uh, I believe that JRA has some plans uh, underneath the train station, Union Station, uh, across from the, uh, King Edward Hotel, what's supposed to been, um, fruit stands and things of that nature is, is still the, uh, the, um, places where they supposed to be operating, I love it. Still there is, is, it's a shed like underneath the, uh, the train tracks. Homeless are there now. I don't think they realize what's there, otherwise they'll be in those, in those places. But I think we can turn the corner, get Union Station back up and moving in the right direction instead of having all the broke windows that you see at Union Station now, and let's put some people in there to bring it back, which will help bring back King Edward Hotel, whether it's up for sale or not. There's rumors. Across the street, there's ceiling that's falling in, in those buildings. If we do not make a effort through JRA to save that inner capital street, it's gonna be gone forever. And I think JRA must lead the way in saving that inner capital street. And the councilman who's closest to representing that area, that's Councilman Harley, if he believed in, in Mr. Washington, then I believe in Mr. Washington. But we all recognize, we have a problem. As they say in Houston, we have a problem. And we need to put some people with some can-do mentality versus people with this, I can't do anything to stop this thing from going down anymore. I remember when, when, uh, Councilmember Lynn said, "Car, when they had problems with those nightclubs." She said, "We got to do a moratorium," and it calmed everything down. So we got to start listening to some councilmembers who, job it is to know what need to be done to improve those situations. Thank you.
All right, yes, Councilman Harley.
Yeah, just one final thing. Uh, there's a notion that, uh, Mr. Washington hasn't been properly vetted. Then yes, he was vetted the first time, that he came before this council, uh, fully with his credentials and everything, and was passed. His, he's also, his wife is also a state representative. He's recognized in the community. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just at a pause to see exactly what the issue is. And just one final question, if he was removed from this board, what type of impact might that be?
Um, it would be a significant impact. Um, he is certainly top two hardest-working board members, and I mean, he puts in, I don't even know how many hours inspecting property, um, for JRA. Uh, that's a hard thing to replace, especially given the fact that he's doing it for free.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. And, uh, and again, look, um, we had a hard enough time finding people to serve on these boards. Uh, I'm, uh, there are several vacancies that I have. When you have someone that's making these boards successful and you don't just reappoint them, then what are you asking for? I mean, just at what point do we, we have to stop cutting our own throats? When you have something that's working, don't fix it. When you have someone that, that's bringing the morale of an entire group, a team together, don't, don't mess with that. Our job here is to confirm folks, and we do that. You know, sometimes, you know, some folks you wish you could undo it, but then some folks you say, man, they need to stay, keep them in place, keep doing what they do. Unless there is something blatant out there. Cause again, no pay. Using their expertise free of charge, getting respect of their peers. All these things are essential to board service. And, uh, you know, and again, they are representing Ward Five, and we needed a good representative on that board, and now we have them. And we're just asking that he remain there in place.
Councilman Banks.
Uh, yeah, hold on. I just want the council, anybody else on the council, if they had anything else to say before. All right, go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, first of all, Mr. York, I thank you for your service. Um, I am very pleased with the work that you're doing. Uh, and I'm grateful to hear the councilmen, uh, or the councilmembers say that, that they're pleased with the direction that JRA is going. Because there will be some very significant asks from JRA in the very near future, uh, for you to take on, and so, um, that is a plus. Uh, and we want to make sure that we maintain the continuity. Uh, Mr. York, just as yourself, uh, you had the opportunity to sit with me. Uh, I thought that you brought, uh, you brought a lot to the team, uh, and without reservation, I put you forward. Uh, the reason that I've asked that, that, you know, nothing be read into this process is because I have a process. Councilman Harley, with all due respect, you, you've never appointed anybody. You've confirmed people. So you don't know the process that, that we go through. So you don't know the process that we go through. You don't know what we ask and what we want to deal with, and the continuity of the work that has to happen. And so, there's a lot of assumptions being made there, right? And so, I deserve the opportunity, if it's somebody who's my appointment, right, to be a part of that process of appointing them, right? That's simply the way that this is organized and orchestrated. I don't know what pull and tug you've had with appointing people, but, you know, there are a lot of people who, JRA, there are certain boards that a lot of people want to be a part of, right? JRA is actually one of those boards, that it is less difficult finding people that want to be a part. It's more difficult making sure that all of the pieces fit. And I'm not saying that Mr. Washington is not a piece that fits. What I am saying is, is for reasons that I do not want to publicize to everyone, right, is that I want to have further conversation with him to make sure that things are working in order, in the order in which we want them to work. And so, I am not publicizing those out of respect for Mr. Washington. That is why I am doing that, right? And so, once I have that conversation, then I will bring it to him. And, you know, while you shake your head with me.
But I'm curious about what...
Whoa, 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 let's make sure he's finished. Hold on.
No, he was asking a question.
No, no.
I hadn't gotten to a question yet. And, you know, while you may be curious about that, right? You know, there's some things you're just going to have to remain curious about, unfortunately, right? And so, likewise, it's an equal opportunity offender for both sides, right? And so, I want the opportunity to talk with him about those things that we are concerned about, or that at least we have questions about, right? And very likely, or possibly, you could see him up for an appointment. But we want to have the opportunity to have those conversations. When he was put on the agenda, for those that are in the public, he was put on the agenda in error, without my knowledge that he was being put on the agenda, without my ability to go through and vet him like I, or talk to him like I talk to every single appointment that we make. And because that didn't happen, we want the opportunity to talk with him. When he came on the agenda last week, or two weeks ago, I told you that I wanted to talk to him. Unfortunately, for the sake of time, I had to go, I left right out of town after that. I asked him to speak to one person who brought forth an issue, and I told him that I would talk to him later on. And I have not had the opportunity to do that, because I have been traveling in the midst of other responsibilities that I have as mayor. And so, I believe that we can either get him on the calendar for me to speak to him either this week or next week, which will precede the next council meeting.
All right. Yes, Councilman Harley.
Somewhere in the future, I'd like to get a good understanding of that process. Because if the success of an organization is not high on that process list, the teamwork and the appreciation of fellow members is not on your process list, the fruitfulness of that organization is not on your process list, and the hard work and dedication of a member is not on that process list, then I'm very, very curious as to what is exactly your priority in examining. Because then, we can skip a lot of stuff, and I can go straight to, oh, well, he's looking for someone that excelled, that does this, this, and this, and this. So we can help your process out, if we understand exactly what you're looking for.
Yeah, let me just say this, because I wanted to, I wanted to remain in place. And the mayor and I have talked, I've had the opportunity to talk to the individual that had concerns as well. I think the biggest problem to avoid this is that when a term expires, or before a term expires, that this process is stopped, you know? And, you know, his term expired August of last year. It's going to be August again. And whoever is responsible for making sure that you are aware of who terms expire, is, you know, when, is where that responsibility ultimately lies. Because a lot of this, this should have been happening, it should have been done a while ago, but we're here now. And then it brings to bear a lot of questions that I brought up yesterday in work session, because the state gives, state law gives us 90 days after August, which means August, September, October, then you've got November. That means every vote that has happened after November is not standing and outright. That ain't the council's fault. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, we just want to make sure there's a problem now. I have here, because I requested this, because I think it's important. Charles Taylor expires 8/13/24. Dr. Jenkins expires 8/13/25. Alex Lawson expires 8/13/24. B. Wash, Brian Washington, expire 8/13/23. Vonda Reeves expires 8/13/26. John Harrison expires 8/13/27. Now, colleagues, I know that there's a lot of important work that JRA does, and it is the mayor's appointment. But I also want to make it clear that what gave the executive branch that authority is that the council created JRA. The council created JRA and gave that authority, and the council can dissolve it. And before we get to a place of inoperation because of untimely submission of reappointments, you know, and, look, I told you that I'm going to give you time, but I wanted to stay some things for the record, but I have to say, colleagues, and I think that, as we look at this, and as we look at, because I don't want any voice circulated from the outside or whatever, to discourage what I think this council all believe has done a good job, and we have commended you with what you've done with JRA. And we've commended even the new executive director. I mean, I thank the world of them, you know, and I think that this is a team, and I don't think that it should be disrupted by any outside voices or anything. I think whatever conversation need to happen, need to happen behind, and we can all sit down together, reason together. And I think that if there are people that you want to make sure are engaged with JRA, that you need to make it known to JRA that, hey, I want to make sure that you're engaged with these community people so that we can work together. I don't think that's hard. I think that's just something simple to do. And so, you know, I just want to say, colleagues, I'm strongly considering proposing dismantling this if we can't get to the bottom of this by the next council meeting. Go ahead, Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you. Just for the record, we did vote Brian Washington out of the planning committee to be voted on, on the June 4th agenda. I know you were worried about this upcoming meeting, but we did want to give the mayor time to meet with Brian. So just wanted to remind the council of what we've, our prior actions taken yesterday.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. After talking with several members of JRA, you know, they really value his voice. And they have a meeting today, a committee meeting, and then they have a meeting tomorrow. And, you know, they are working. They're quasi-government that was, again, set up by the council. And so, I wanted to give opportunity to the branch of directors to speak to it, so that it can also be expressed on the record of the need for him, you know?
I have more to add. So briefly, I think that it makes little sense if we are commending the work of JRA to then talk about the dissolution of JRA right after that, based on the need to complete a process.
If it's going to be dismantled, because...
Would we dismantle because one person wasn't on there?
No. I'm saying if there's going to be ward-declared members because one person has a problem with them...
First of all, let's be clear. No one person, no one person makes decisions for me. Do I listen to community members? Do I process what people share with me? Absolutely. But as I have shared with them in their interviews, that I want you to vote your conscience and what you feel is best, and I'm putting you on to represent the interests that you are appointed for, right? Your interest and what you think as a member of this community, and what your technical know-how and understanding has informed you. And so, I still remain in that position. As I told you in our conversation, right, that no one person has that level of influence that I would blow up things because of that, right? If someone has issue with me specifically, if you're doing the job and you have good notions and move forward, then I want you to stay in and work in that regard. So all of those things, that's just, just putting that in the atmosphere is inaccurate and is irrelevant to what we're discussing here. But, you know, moving forward, you know, talking about cooperation, you know, often what I need for the council to do is allow me to do my role, so that when we present it for your role, that you evaluate all the things that you want to. The fact that you put it in the committee flies in the face that it's my appointment, but I didn't make no issue of it. I hadn't said anything about it. I'm not trying to fight about that. I'm not trying to make an issue. How are you going to put my appointment in a committee, right? That's not even for you to consider. It's my appointment, right? It's my appointment. And so, I want to go through the process to say, to feel as good as you do. You all feel good about when it comes time for you to confirm him, right? Shouldn't I feel as good about, you know, all the things that, whatever my questions are, whatever my questions are, right? You know, from the president on down, right? People aren't going to, are not going to appoint someone unless they feel that they are consistent with the vision that they want to implement and where they want to go forward. And so, that's what I need to know. And very well, that could be true, but we're making far more of an issue of it now than what it should be, because simply what I have requested, that I go through the process of vetting him and talking to him about the things that I want to talk to him about, that that happen.
Yeah, yeah. And then I'll ask, you know, what is the way, I'll just say this, I don't think we'd be having this conversation to this degree if his term expired last month. It's been since August of '23. There's a Ward Four spot that ain't even filled, and nothing has happened with it for the past three years. So, you know, I mean, maybe we might need to take action like the state when it comes to directors. You have 90 days to do it, and if that doesn't happen, then, you know, whatever. But at the end of the day, my push is presence to make sure that Ward Five has some representation. Anybody else has anything they want to say, and colleagues?
Quickly, and in not acknowledgement of what you said, you're absolutely correct that when these expire, the reality is, there's a lot of movement, there's a lot of boards. Sometimes, it gets lost in the process of when expirations, and that's, we don't profess to be perfect over here, right? We don't profess to have all of the answers, but yes, that does happen. And it was, the alarm was not rang early enough that his expiration had taken place, right? And so, that's what happened. And in fact, you mentioned that Ward Four does not have representation. In fact, we're the ones that asked for more representation of JRA, because JRA was a five-member board until we asked for its expansion. So the notion that it has fewer representation now than it historically has is actually inaccurate, because it was a five-member board, right? And now, we have expanded to a seven-member board for the purpose of each ward being represented.
All right. This item is on the floor. Councilman Harley.
Just one thing. I heard, you know, something about feelings and stuff. This isn't about feelings to me, and not to continue to badger this issue, but when a board or commission is successful, and we have given them legal authority to do what's going to be successful, like the airport board, you know, they're a commission in itself. Once we appoint someone, once the city council confirms them, then they're out there making the best decisions possible. And if, and my only, and you're right, we don't, we can't appoint commissioners, a board member, city council, that's not our responsibility. But, not that we're stupid or anything, we know this success when we see it. And we want this city to continue to be successful, and if it ain't broken, don't fix it. And if it's successful, then let's keep marching towards success with the team that we have. That's all. But it's entirely up to you, and it's not about feelings. It's about success of these organizations. And if I'm hearing success, teamwork, leadership, then yeah, we're, you know, we get excited about a win versus a lose, versus something else that's broken. Just give us a win. Continue to win in different areas. Don't, you know, you have your own plan and your own way, but don't, just don't tinker until we break something.
All right. Colleagues, if that's all the comments, the mayor's request is that we hold this for another two weeks. I'll give him the opportunity to have some sit-down with Mr. Washington. What's, for those that made the motions, it's on you. What's your program? Withdrawing, or you want to keep it? It's up to you. I think the motions were made by Harley and Lindsay. So let me just, let me just explain it, in case, I hope it doesn't. Either we've just withdrawn and give the mayor the opportunity, if there's a refusal to withdraw, then one doesn't withdraw, then the item either dies.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
You had asked, I was going to say, I appreciate Councilwoman Lee reminding us that we agreed in the planning committee, because I'd forgotten that, that we were going to give it until June 4th. And so, I appreciate that reminder, and so, I withdraw my second.
All right. So the motion and the second have been withdrawn. This is off the table. Thank you. All right. Let's go to item 18.
19.
19.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson and Moticon, Inc., for the use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to implement housing repair activities under the Department of Planning and Developments Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
Second.
It's been moved a proper second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries an answer. The next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to amend agreement with Staffers, Inc., to provide temporary staffing services for the office of the city attorney.
Second.
This item has been properly moved a second. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Lega, in terms of temporary staffing, how much are we going to budget? How many positions? And how long before we can get permanent staffing?
Councilman Stokes, the answer for the budgeting is, the only hires that would be made through this are positions that are already budgeted within the current city attorney's budget. In other words, we would fill current needs that have already been slotted and already budgeted with temporary solutions, with the hope of turning those into permanent employees. In terms of the amount that they would be paid that's cited in the order, we're seeking, our preference would be to hire long-term employees as we find them. This is to allow us the flexibility to hire somebody more quickly when the need arises.
How would that be explained to the public as a success story?
Well, I think the success story, the ultimate success story is filling all of the slots with qualified competent attorneys that can continue to do the job of the office. We're recruiting both short and long-term, with the idea that all of those solutions will ultimately be long-term solutions.
How many paralegals do we currently have?
We have none.
Most of these firms using a lot of paralegals, why are we not moving in that direction?
The short answer, Councilman, is the budgeted amounts to pay qualified paralegals is not sufficient to hire a qualified paralegal. We're trying to train within people that don't have those certifications. We're trying to teach them those skills and help them obtain those certifications, because it helps our office and it helps them long-term. But as it exists, we do not have a paralegal within the office.
Do we have plans to hire some paralegals?
We would love to hire qualified paralegals, but until we can pay them a competitive salary, we're not going to find one that's already able to do the work.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Mayor.
Drew, I would encourage you to look through your budget and see, you know, if we need to cannibalize some positions so that we can offer a more competitive raise, but a rate, we would look for you to find, and with HR, to find a rate that we feel is sufficient to entice people.
And we're working on that right now. I think we're about 95% there to present something to the administration and the council that includes those requests.
All right. Councilwoman Lee.
Drew, I see we passed an order similar to this September of last year, so in the interim, we still haven't been able to find any permanent.
The previous order didn't apply to the city attorney's office. The previous order, as I understand it, was to approve this contract with staffers, which would allow the hiring of the various positions that are cited in paragraph two of the order. All this does is amend that contract by allowing us to also hire attorney positions from that same contract.
I got it. And so, in the budget request you'll have?
I will. So at this point, because we have empty slots that we're trying to fill, the way we plan to do this is, first of all, there's a budgeted section for temporary work already within our office, so we would begin by using that amount. What we would hope to do then is find people who are competent, that we can turn, transition into permanent employees, who would then fill those budgeted salary slots.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Councilman Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you, as a practice, as the department, as a practice, do exit interviews with the folks that decide to leave the city?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, we, we haven't with the most recent ones, and that's a good idea. Of course, we know why they both left because of the opportunities that they were afforded. Um, I think I've mentioned those before. We lost a litigator who was hired to become the Vicksburg City Attorney, and then he turned around and hired one of our litigators to be his top assistant over there. Both received substantial raises in taking those positions, and both are people that I have talked to in detail both before and since they left about those opportunities, and we're happy for those opportunities. But as a regular practice, I hadn't been in the office long enough to have considered that. It's a good idea, and we will.
I recommend it. It's a good, good management practice.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? All right, item carries four, two. Next item.
Order amend in the office of the city attorney's fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget.
We'd, we'd withdraw on this one for later consideration.
All right, uh, this one is pulled, you want to just hold it to the next council meeting, let it roll over, or you want to pull it all together?
We'll be making, it depends on how many revisions we end up making to it, is the short answer. The numbers will be revised.
All right, just, just put it, put it back. All right, 22.
Order authorizing payment of subscription fees to LinkedIn to promote job openness for the office of the city attorney.
Some of, second.
Let's move properly second this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilman Ford.
Um, I'm curious, you may not be my answer to this, I'm curious if, if we've used LinkedIn to fill some of the slots in the Public Works Department.
I can't speak to that one way or the other. For this, what we're doing to go to the same answer I gave Councilman Stokes a moment ago, it's long-term and short-term recruiting for our office. This is more of a, this is part of that long-term strategy. And so what we have found is that a number of attorneys, and I think paralegals as well, frankly, use LinkedIn as a resource to find available positions. If you just use their free service, your posting will be buried on the third or fifth or 12th page, and no one will ever see it. If you pay and you can, you can budget different amounts at different times based on demand, that rises up to the top of the list and you get more, uh, responses from that. So that's what this is for that. In terms of Public Works, I couldn't speak to that.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other question, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? All right, item passes five, one. Next item.
Order reviewing and continuing August 29, 2022, state of emergency.
Some of.
Second.
Let's move properly second this item. Any questions or concerns?
And, and I'm getting lost at this point. Which, that was, which?
Emergency.
The, the water, is that 2020, uh, August 29?
Number, number 23.
Yep.
And, and I'm saying that because I know we declared, do I see other emergencies? We declared emergency for the more recent storm.
Good.
And I know at some point that's gonna require y'all's ratification.
All right, uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right, next item.
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
Some of.
Second.
All right, it's been moved a proper second this item. This one is the, the first one is the freeze, this one is the flood. All right, they're like it's backwards. The freeze happened in 2020, right?
The freeze?
The freeze.
The freeze happened, no, a freeze happened in 2020, the more recent freeze happened in 2022.
So was another freeze in 2022? Yeah, this is the flood. I thought the flood happened in 22. But okay, just, just look at that. Just look at it. But it says that the flood happened in 2020 based on this. All right, all in favor? All right, item carries unanimously. Uh, next item.
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi approving an employment agreement for the Jackson Police Chief, Assistant Chief of Police, and Jackson Fire Chief.
Some of. Second.
All right, just move a proper second this item. Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, I, all members of the council should have a copy of the, an example of an agreement for terms, conditions, and benefits of employment. This is just a copy of what a contract would look like, not saying this is how it must be done. It's contracts, uh, all over this country. We believe that, um, it's important that, uh, the chief of police and the crime situation that we have, that we have an opportunity to get ahead of the crime situation in Jackson. We believe that the first responders and the people with police and fire deserve to make sure there's no politics involved at all. We want to make sure that as we ask for a contract for the chief of police, for his assistance, and for the fire chief, that we keep in consideration that it's been done before in the city of Jackson. It's not the first time. I would have hoped that our legal department could have found some of the other contracts out of Chief Wilson and Chief Johnson so that the council members could have had an example of some of the contracts that we have already done in the city of Jackson.
Councilman Stokes, I did want you to know that we, we got that request from your office and, and have been looking. The, they're both old enough that they're not in our records, and we made the request from the city clerk as well who's looking for those. They're in storage, is what it looks like, and so they're trying to find those contracts. We can provide them to you.
Yeah, well, we still feel that it's, the funerals in this city are too many and too often. We believe that public safety must not be allowed to be put on the back burner. The city and its citizens must come first. We must make sure that as the election cycle begins to evolve, that first responders would not be a part of that equation. I believe that the chief can turn it around. I believe that we need to get it this way. Get out of the chief's way and let him do what need to be done. I had the chance to talk to the grandmother, Ms. Bennett. I think her the last murder victim that we had in this city on North Side Drive. Man going to work like he's been doing for many years. Stop over there at the service station and normally get his breakfast. Left his car running. Had no idea he wouldn't even get a chance to cut the car off. We got to do something about crime in this city. Innocent people are dying. And I believe we can do something. And I believe that the first step is giving the chief of police a contract. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, uh, Councilman Stokes, just to, um, make sure I, I understand. One, I, I remember, uh, I may mention this just to the mayor, but I remember Robert Johnson, I think it was right leading up into an election, and, um, uh, there was a contract at that time because no telling what would happen with the outcome of the election. But what, when I'm listening to you, it's like I'm hearing you say that you're trying to move, or have an agreement with the chief for chief way for a longstanding and take that authority away from?
No, same, same scenario.
So same, same scenario, but see?
End of the mayor's term, the end of the chief's term.
So, no, no, here's, here's the thing, in, when, when Harvey was, was mayor at that point, when they did that contract with Robert, uh, it was because they had no chief. And they wanted to, he wanted to be able to bring Robert in from, um, up north. You know, he was up Chicago somewhere, so he, huh?
Michigan.
Michigan, he was up in Michigan, that's right. He was the chief up there. And they bought him down here from Michigan. He moved over there off Hanger Mouse, not Hanger Mouse, Beasley, wherever state, over there, not around the corner, from Woodley. But you know what I'm talking about? Two houses from my cousin, Artis Bolder. Right, he moved right there, and then because he moved, they did a contract because it may be, he didn't know the outcome of the election and they had no chief part two. That was my understanding of the practice. So I, I'm just trying to get an understanding, um, what would be the need for doing this if there's already a chief appointed?
Well, with the chief and the contract, go back to Chief Wilson.
Now, I don't remember that now.
Chief Wilson was the, originally, 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 it won't come out. Chief Wilson was the first black chief of police.
So this before Bracy?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see, I don't know nothing about that.
Uh, the chief, uh, that first came in, then stayed long. And once they brought in Chief Wilson, uh, the contract was established to make sure that, uh, the citizens of this city put place first. And that's what we need to do. We got to, we got to make sure that the chief of police can get this crime under some kind of control. You're gonna keep losing citizens because they're afraid, number one, and others are dying, number two. The people believe in this chief. They believe that he can turn the corner, make things happen that's supposed to happen. They believe that a contract where he cannot be just fired because the way he wears hair or, or something like that.
You said, because the way he wears hair?
Well, that's just an example. Would not be fired for just cause, no cause at all. So that's why at this stage, you don't wait till it get into the election cycle anymore, unless they do a contract, because people are gonna be campaigning on crime, fires, and those kind of things. Let's get that out of the equation. Let's make sure that public safety, first responders are not gonna be part of the political landscape. That's why at the federal level, you try to make sure you keep the FBI from being a part of it. That's why you make sure you keep those, uh, senior members of, of the, uh, federal government. You keep them away from being political and being replaced.
Yeah, so, so, Councilman Stokes, I, I hear you, and I, I'm, I'm sure I understand. So I, let me just say, I, you, you know, whenever we say the word order and based on its statutory intent, it is an order of the city council ordering the mayor, and I don't know if we can give an order to something that's already stated in his statutory authority, which is, with his ability to appoint. However, I, I, I think that if you desire to see something like this, um, be something that is initiated, uh, then I will say that maybe you would request for legal, and I think that, and I want you to hear me on this, that it, it be an ordinance, and that ordinance is saying that six or five months prior to an election, during the election year, we, we may have the authority to do that. I don't think we have the authority to do it as an order, but we have the authority to create laws. And we can create an ordinance saying five, six months before an election, the chief and the fire chief shall go under contract to make sure that there's no political involvement, da, 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 if that's what you're saying. I think that if we're gonna do it, if we have any chance of doing it, we have to do it through ordinance. If we threw it through order, we are impeding way up on his ability and his appointment. You know what I'm saying? Because it's like he made the appointment, turn around and exercise a contract with his appointment, uh, that's held by the council, but at the end of the day, it's all executive. But if we want to deal with it, then our only way of dealing with that is through an ordinance. And I would suggest that, um, uh, give legal the opportunity to look at what such an ordinance would look like.
Well, we requested legal look at drawing up, uh, the agreement, the, uh, one of the council members wants to see an example of it, that's why I ended it, um, with the signature of the council president. But legally, we can do it by order. And we have the authorities to do it by order. And that's why I have it on the agenda.
Well, if I want it on the contract.
Well, legally, you probably won't, but I'm just saying, I put it under the president because legal didn't draw it up. Legal would probably have to man sign to it, there's no question.
No, 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 I, I think if it's got it, we can't change our form of government regardless.
We're not changing anything.
No, no, hear me out, hear me out. In order for us to achieve this, it is my belief that our only way to do it, it had to be ord, and it can't be specific toward any administrator, it just has to be that the council has therefore looked at this and in 2024 decided that five months prior to election, that there should be some type of contractual engagement for law enforcement until actually the election is over with. It will have to be an ordinance set in stone that's law. That's, that, and I think that that will be better ground, so it could be something that's ongoing. If not, you know what I'm saying, during the order, I, I just think that there will be challenges and it, it will.
But people always can challenge in the law, but will they be successful? And I think not. It's been proven, not just in Jackson, we've done orders before, but all over the state and all over the United States, and they meet legal muster. So this is legal, we're not trying to negotiate a contract because you know how much he makes. You're just gonna fill in the blanks. We're not trying to take the mayor's ability to negotiate the contract with the chief. We're not changing salaries. We're not negotiating anything. We're gonna fill in the blanks, give him the authority that he currently have, but we're doing it by contract, and there's nothing illegal about that.
All right, um, Mayor.
Yeah, just briefly, uh, what would be, what would not be analogous to the circumstance that has been presented in the past is that that contract was presented by the mayor. Uh, this one is not being presented by the mayor.
That's true.
You know, also for the benefit of the public, you know, I've said enough on this, so I, I won't belabor the point. Uh, the chief and I have a wonderful relationship. We work hard together. The chief, I quote, called me to say, "Under no circumstance do I want to be under contract." Uh, that was, that was his direct words to me, unsolicited. Uh, and, and so I, I just, uh, want to be clear in, in what the distinguishing components of, of what is being asked and, and, and those things right now. Uh, you can do what you, you know, y'all have the prerogative to do what you want to do. Uh, the, I would only say that even with an ordinance, a city ordinance, it still can't be contrary to state law. State law supersedes, you know, even the ordinance as we create, so I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. President, uh, when this item first came on the agenda, first brought on the agenda, Drew Cain Diddo. Now, from Cain Diddo was a council member who put it on, and that was with Chief Wilson. Now, I have not received a phone call today where the chief of police said, "I do not want a contract." Now, I know the mayor's saying that he told him, but I doubt if any member of this council to receive the phone call today saying, "I don't want a contract."
Did you receive a phone call saying that he wanted one?
What I am saying is this. If he could tell the mayor he didn't want one, he could call members of his body and say he did. What this man has done, and we don't need to put him in the middle of this back and forth, is to make sure that we don't lose the spotlight on safety. The citizens in this city need to be safe. The citizen in this city need to be safe. It's too much killing. Too much robbing. Allow the Chief of Police to be the Chief of Police, unhandcuff him. Untie his hands. Too many funerals, too many deaths, and we all know it and see it and feel it. And we do absolutely nothing. Let's do something. Let's say, chief. Here's the ball. And you handle your business, thank you.
All right, uh, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just just briefly, not sure where this is going to end, but I do agree with premise of it. You know, those folks in uniform. And especially the the leaders, they need to have full confidence, the the people they that serve on them. Need to have the full confidence that they're not being used as any type of political anything. Uh, and and I I know it's, you know, it's, it may be, well, that's not gonna happen. But as we get closer in, things just happen to appear a certain way. But what, one thing I think what the, I think what the councilman is attempting to do is just make sure that that position is insulated. Against all the noise. Because he's working a program, he's working it well. And uh, I think any kind of installation we can give him uh during that time would be would be very helpful. I believe in this chief, I've talked with him uh numerous times personally. Uh, you know, he hadn't expressed e- either way here or there on this contractual issue. But my conversations has always been. Please ignore the political noise. Get about doing your job. No, no picture taken of this or that, and and none of that nonsense that comes along with the political circus. We don't need that, we got, like Councilman Stokes said, we got too many bodies dropping here in Jackson. There's too much work to do. We, there is just no place for that. So uh, anything that could be worked out here to offer that degree of protection, uh, that degree of insulation. Against any type of political, and not just for this police chief, but the others as well, I I'd be willing to. To at least entertain and and examine the legal um surroundings of it.
All right, it, so let me ask this colleagues, um. Can 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 I have consideration to withdrawal or second and the motion to give legal the opportunity to look at an ordinance?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think the mayor stated even you did ordinance.
I don't think he stated an objection for them to look into it.
But what I would rather we do, cause we got so many issues in front of us. Let's close this chapter, let's take a vote and let's move on to the other chapter, we got too much to do in front of.
All right, all right, all in favor? Oppose. All right. Item twenty eight, bed bugs.
Oh, no, sir, we got this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty six, I'm sorry.
Resolution of the Jackson City Council encouraging the City of Jackson's Department of Planning and Development to issue a ninety day warning to avoid unnecessary violations. And ensure proper advertisements is sent to the public on how to use new meter chaos, kiosk.
So move.
Your second.
It's properly second on this item. Are there any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um. It's confusing to a number of people. They see parking meters, they see bags on the meters. Uh, people who have traveled, uh, know that you go to the box, the machinery. But a lot of older people and other people who not, who have not really traveled, they don't know what to do. So we did it through resolution. Where we want to request public. I'm sorry, the planning department. And the City of Jackson administration to have community meetings, educate the people. And to also um. Explain to the people. That the proper way to use this machinery. Is to do this, that, and that. We can't punish people for not knowing. I look at so many people who using the phones today, little children, three, four years old. Can use a cellphone. You got people with, like me. With a J D degree, just not getting the first iPhone. So. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Do not assume everybody are gonna know how to use this machinery because they cannot. Let's take time out, let's educate them, let them know what need to be done, how do you do this and that? Let's not make a good citizen a criminal. They want to do what's right, they just don't know how. And. It's important. That we don't make citizens think this is a money grab. City just trying to get money from you. So we gonna put this new machinery out here that you can't use while you go downtown trying to take care of business. And you get a ticket, some that some of these old people ain't never had in their life. A ticket. So I think we could do it, we can do public service announcements. On on radios, try to explain to the people on television, try to explain to the people what you need to do. So they don't be afraid of the machinery, some people aren't ready to vote because they're afraid of the machine. Afraid to go vote. So they don't go. People got used to paying these parking. Meters over the years, now you change all that. And it's scary to some of the older people. I'm not saying all. Some of them never even come downtown anymore. So let's make it welcoming. Make it something that they don't mind. Let's make it something good. Instead of something bad, thank you.
Councilman Stokes? Um, what if, um. With this, you know, cause they're already up and 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 they're already been activated, from my understanding, am I correct? Um, and what if we were to get? If the mayor could get Melissa to um look at what it would cost to do a fifteen day campaign and we allocate? I mean, cause I I I, if if I'm hearing your concern is making sure that people get educated right. I don't know if in our budget, we have enough money to do the rapid commercials on TV to make sure people are rightly educated. Um, about this, so what if we were to uh. Set aside some money to make sure that there was communication focused strictly on this?
I I think our um. Our personnel that we have with communications. Uh, is. Is more than qualified. She know what to do, uh, she know what to say to media people so that they can. You know, get the information, they have grandparents. And they know what their grandparents going through in terms of. Of these.
Yeah.
Is, think about the first time we went to New Orleans and we saw this. The only reason we knew what to do. Was because we saw that the parking attendant.
You've been going to Bourbon?
And we asked the park attendant, we said, where are the meters? Ain't no meters, you use this. And that's how we got started, so the point I'm trying to make is. We can all find a win win in this.
All right, so so you you would go with that recommendation to ensure that there was some. Money set aside specifically for communications on this?
I think whatever the director suggests, we follow her lead.
Which director you talking about, this one or that one?
Well, I'm talking about our communication.
You talking about communications?
Yeah, cause we gonna have to communicate.
Can can you get?
Public.
Can you get an estimate? On what a good rapid campaign that that basically floods this market? Will cost? If she does that, will we hold, we hold this item until?
Well, it's only resolution, it's not an order. So we can, we can pass a resolution at the same time.
Okay.
We can, you know, let the director, uh.
Come up and ask him four hundred thousand dollars.
On how we can let people know and and.
Okay.
Television will probably run it free and radio at all, so we're running.
It ain't, it ain't running free, it ain't running free.
It was, uh, but they'll let us know what we need to do to educate the public so the public won't think that we just trying to.
Run for our commercials during the NBA championship, uh, go ahead Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, the resolution just says. That we are encouraging the planning department. Uh, to issue a ninety day warning, I think we should leave it up to the discretion of the planning department.
Okay.
To address Mr. Stokes' concerns, and I don't think we need to get into the, you know, trying to design the whole thing ourselves, I think we just need to. Do, let the planning department come up with a plan to make sure people educated and and that um. They feel welcome in downtown Jackson.
All right, uh, Mayor.
Uh, I won't say anything about a resolution encouraging, but what I, what I will say is, hey, if if y'all want to give some, some money that helps. Uh, get the communication out, uh, I know Councilman Foot ain't trying to let go of anything. Um, but I think that that would, that, you know, if that is a sincere concern. Then us pausing doesn't educate them, right, and if we don't have the resources to market the things that we're asking to be marketed. Uh, we talk about things like social media and Facebook, but that's only driven by the people who come, if you don't put money behind pushing. Same thing that that Drew said about LinkedIn, the only way that the algorithm increases is when you put the money towards the algorithm. Making it populate on people's page, and so. When people don't understand why we don't market or push certain things, because we don't have a budget to market and push certain things. And this would be one that that if this, the the issue is as we stated to be. We can, we can better publicize that change, but for those that need to know how to use the kiosk. What you put is the zone, which is on the side of the kiosk that you're parking in, and you put your license plate in. That way, when they come through, they see the license plates that are registered to have paid for parking and the ones that are not paid. All you do is put your license plate in it, if you, if you look at your license plate and put your zone, it's done.
All right, Councilman Harley, Councilwoman Lee asks if you will yield to her.
That, and I will not charge you for that marketing, that was free, right?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lee asking if you will yield to her?
Go ahead.
Colleagues, I thought when we um voted on this contract that the company was supposed to do the advertising. Okay.
Okay. Now, I just, uh, you know, look, I'm trying to look at solutions here, I'm hearing, oh, well, we need to put more money over here, that, look, we have a press conference. Mayors have a press conference. It's, uh, 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 I'm, what I'm saying, my point is, that's doesn't cost anything, does it?
It doesn't.
Okay, and and I'm just looking at 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 options here, because I don't want to just hear, well, we're just broke, 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 there are options. Neighborhood associations, give me a pamphlet and I'll put it out to all my neighborhood associations, okay? There are, there are a lot of other things other than we can't, and it's gonna cost us money that we don't have. And I'm, and I, look, give it to me, I'll pu- I'll put it on my radio show. Uh, and I'll give it five minute blur for for her to come on and talk about that, there are plenty of options. Instead of not doing anything because of this, 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 or this, that's all I'm saying.
To be clear, we've already, we've already spoken about this at multiple press conferences with with uh the explanation. As recently, as recently as yesterday, uh, so so thank you for that idea. Uh, we also have the pamphlets uh to be passed out to neighborhood, I think that's what Jai was coming up here to share. That, so those things have been contemplated, and to be clear, we didn't ask for any money, we just keep moving and and we had, but when it was suggested. I said, hey, if you, if, we'll take it if you want to give it to us in order to promote.
Because I understand that if you get one commercial about it during the NBA championship, everybody gonna see you.
And and do, are there, um, just for Ms. Payne, are there ways to get public service announcements? Uh, I I think they used to have PSAs that you could do, uh, at no charge, so we, they no longer, media no longer does that. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, we would take any. Uh, advice that planning want to give us, how they think that they can make it happen. Um. I do want to, you know. Wish everyone longevity, she had these birthdays. You know, I'm, I don't think I'm the only one in here who might not know his tag number. It's easy to say, oh, you just put your tag number in there.
It's on the car that you're parking.
No, no, no.
But he's saying if you park like.
All the people ain't finna go look at the tag. Then go to this machine. They ain't gonna do that, and you ain't gonna do it, you gonna go look at your tag, I'm gonna go to this machine, then put it in there.
It doesn't fit the receipt for you.
At least let these old people be treated with respect. Show them what you want to be done and they would do it. But to sit up here and put this out here and then say, well, it's your fault, you didn't do it, we gonna give you a ticket. I ain't supporting that.
All right, uh. Mr. Keith, you good? All right, let's just vote on this resolution, y'all, all right, all in favor of this resolution? All right, item carries, all right. Item twenty eight bed bugs, Ms. Stokes' bed bugs.
Mr. President, I'm I'm gonna hold that, this this uh young man. Uh, was at his grandmother's house. And he can't stop me, he said, Kenny, my grandmother's been eating up by bed bugs. That's something you think you been hearing about in nursing homes. But how many senior citizens got homes? That's invaded by bed bugs, I don't think we can tell them throw away the furniture and this and that. And they did that, but I want to hold it to get the health department in here to let us know what we need to do.
Okay, all right, we'll hold it, uh. Twenty nine Loxbury Street.
Got a young man been sending the whole meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, come on, little brother, tell them about your concerns about Loxbury, he lives on Loxbury.
Why you sign up for public comments? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
How y'all doing, ca- councilman? My name is Samuel Harrison, I live at Loxbury Street. I received a seventeen thousand dollar water bill. For four months, and I don't know how they give me the runarounds. At the water company, every time I call, no answer, this is the first bill. That I had in four months. That I first started ma- living there, and there shouldn't be no seventeen thousand dollars. And I'm just. I'm just a regular man trying to make it. Yes, Mayor.
No, I I I want to thank you for coming forward and sharing this and and, you know, there have been building challenges for some time, so I don't want to. Be hypocritical in that, uh, where we have the greatest level of concern. Is that there are very few avenues for people to have these issues rectified, and that's what we, that's what we are complaining in, and. What gives me the greatest level of disappointment is that none of the people sitting up here can make them. Respond to you uh any, any sooner, but I do believe that that making sure that we memorialize this, we will reach out. On behalf of of your account and encourage them to speak to you quickly, but but the customer service. Uh, locations that used to be present are no longer, are no longer available. Um, so we will, we understand the urgency and the concern that you have. Uh, and I'm assuming that that you don't live. In a. You know. A big, huge establishment that has multiple people that, you said seventeen thousand?
I got a water bill right here.
How lo- how much?
Seventeen thousand.
Yeah, seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah. Let me, let me, let me say this, um, and Mr. Wright, Mayor, City Attorney's Office. If we can get Jackson Water. To go back and look at their buildings and what they're doing, I'm gonna tell you what happened Friday, I had to speak at Old Forest. I got a call, cause they shut the E Center off, they shut off Jackson State. I proceeded to talk to somebody that used to be employed here, they said that they were finna shut off Domain Campus in several J P S schools, so I called over. To Jackson State University, I asked to send a list so I could provide it with what they were billing. So they had over two hundred thousand dollars due. For C F Moore. Now, Charles F Moore building.
Tore down.
Been tore down. Since twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and so those, that, I think that is an example of some of the things that are happening, and when I. Asked about it, they said, oh, well, we'll remove that account, but you were still billing for it. And so I think that that may be some of the issues, so I don't know how that request is made, how you had that conversation. With Jackson Water, but I think it has to happen.
There's supposed to be a meeting with uh Mr. Wright, uh, once, uh, how frequently? Once a week, uh, how, how many times does it happen? Cancellations. Yeah, so, and and part of the agreed stipulated order is that there would be communication with the City of Jackson, and that's not happening.
There's a couple of things I also want to address while I'm here on Loxbury. Y'all just paved the street right on Loxbury, there is a hole right there where y'all just paved it. I think it's water coming from under, under it or whatever, you got water. Water. You got water, water running through Loxbury.
In, unfortunately, would be a Jackson Water.
I know. But I'm talking about the, it's it's where y'all streets are paved, but uh.
Uh, they stepped out, but uh, Chris Gray?
He got his bills and he was making.
Okay. We also want to check on the um, the infrastructure issue on the street as well. All right.
All right, all right. Before, uh, I've never got some more discussion before I go, uh, is there?
I'd I'd like to make a motion to bring back claims.
Is there a second?
Second.
But before I do, Mr. um Stokes has something to say.
Thank you. I'm, I I I thank my colleagues for everything, and I do not want to block this. So I'm, I just want to introduce a young man from linear high school, Mr. Rodrick Hunter, for being here. Stand up, little brother, for being here. Thank you so much. And I'm, Mr. President, I'm gonna lead, so you can take the vote on that item without me holding it up.
This young man resembles uh, uh, Marcus Williams' son so much that I thought that was his son sitting in the the audience this whole time. So pleasure to meet you, brother.
Yeah, I, I know it. So I'm gonna take both of those up in just a second. All right, uh, let's go to uh claims. Vote on, what we on? Oh, reconsideration, all in favor? Oppose? All right, item carries, three to two. All right, let's get uh. It's on the floor.
Order approving claims appearing at pages zero five, three, two, inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of three million, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty, nine hundred four dollars and eighty-five cents, four, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved a proper second this item. Uh, I move that we take out all of the towing.
So moved, second.
All right, it's been moved a proper second that we take out all of the towing. Uh, all in favor? All right, item carries unanimously. Now we have claims on the floor as e- as amended. Uh, any question or comments? All in favor is claims as amended. All right, claims passes. All right, uh.
Do you do your opposed?
Oh, oppose, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to oppose.
Passes three, two.
This is my flight.
Case three, two.
All right, emergency item. Um, colleagues, we have this emergency item, um, dealing with uh the mayor to execute contract uh with various organizations. This is, this is a twenty twenty-two grant, uh, and and we have to utilize it. And it it goes, it has come to us for us to distribute to those that help mitigate our homeless problem.
So moved.
Like, yeah, I I I'll read the list real quick.
Catholic charities?
I'll read the list real quick. Catholic charity, Stupot, uh, Billy Bronford, Stupot Matt's House, uh, Carter's Compassionate Traditional Supporter Housing, Born to Lead, Walkin' Nunnies, and Voice of Calvary Ministries. All right, and so uh, my question is, can I get a motion in a second to get this added?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved a proper second to add this agenda as an emergency. Uh, any question or comments? All, yes, sir.
Yes, my comment is, I am, I tend not to, not to vote for this, and the reason why is this.
We have a motion that we can discuss.
I think the major mayor had uh, had mentioned earlier that we met uh to discuss homelessness. One of the issues I had was that we're tapping into a lot of our city resources. Police Department, Fire Department, Police Department that can't respond, Fire Department uh with issues. And there are a lot of different issues around this homeless question that I need to see being addressed. And it's just not, and to throw this little remedy here or this, I I don't see a plan. I don't see what we're doing on it. And so um, and and then we had the uh, the discussions concerning the sixty tiny uh homes. Not quite sure where that's at right now, uh, or if that's any place. But the issue is, we continue to have these uh, uh, we continue to have folks on the streets, continue to have a problem. And I, and I think my, I can speak for my community in saying, we need to see what is going to be our approach. Bring it to the people, let's set up some town halls, let the folks know what we plan on doing. Right now, I'm having businesses that are affected, all along Highway eighty corridor, when we're trying to get business in there. I'm having neighborhood affected. We still haven't dealt with the issues of squatting, uh, squatting and having a a a a a program where we can verify with affidavit where a police department can go in and remove squatters out of the house. So now houses are devalued, neighborhoods are devalued. Um, it and it's it's just an on and on and on problem. If we don't put this as a priority and not just, well, we got a little money here, let's throw it at it, we got this grant over here, let's throw it at it. Let's come up with this comprehensive plan and take it to the public and ask them for their input on it. Uh, because the business community is definitely affected, and as they uh become more and more affected, they're gonna move out. They're gonna get tired of it, uh, especially on my Highway eighty. W- w- we can't, we can't deal with folks moving out. And I'm seeing more and more, and I'm not seeing anything that resembles anything that we can take to the public and said, hey, this is how we're going to address our our homeless issues. You know, research into other municipalities, seeing what they do, and then come up with a plan for the city of Jackson. Right now, police department having to respond, they, and they say, well, they can't go into houses. Fire Department can go into houses. Code enforcement can go on the properties, but you can't go in and remove remove squatters and and stuff. So a lot of issues need to be uh focused on, and uh, and I'm not inclined to continue to piecemeal this thing.
All right, let, 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 let me say this, and I see you, Councilwoman Lee, but but uh, I mean, Councilwoman Lee, let me say this. Uh, um, Councilman Harley, I hear you, and I understand your concerns. This is what I'm asking. Um, you know, it's it's hard enough to achieve, try to get these grants. Um, and, yeah, I I think that there is the acknowledgement of it being done timely or whatever. However, I think it makes it more difficult for us in the future to be able to get grants where we ended up sending money back because it's not utilized within a certain timeframe. And so understanding um your concerns and your unreadiness, my, my ask is, you know, so that we could have the opportunity as whatever plans and discussion need to happen to help you, you know, get to a place of more readiness, concern this, that for the sake of us not having to send this money back and being able to utilize it. And Dr. Murray, you could speak to, if you want to, how difficult it is to come back around after, you know, we've got money, they had to six, send it back, how difficult it is to come back around and try to get it the next time. Cause then then we're not, we're not likely.
Not good stewards of our money.
Yeah, we're not likely to get it again. And so I I'm asking for that regard, that we take this up and get it done. Uh, let me let Dr. Murray, then I'll come to you presently, then back to you, Mr. Harley.
Okay, I I, you're absolutely correct, Councilman Banks, is that when we return grant funds, it makes it that much more difficult to come back later. We're not going to be able to address the uh unhoused issue in Jackson without outside money. And if we're giving money back that we've already received to address this issue, it doesn't really help mitigate the concerns that you're raising, uh, Councilman Harley. So it's it's we send money back, we sit on our hands, and we do nothing because we don't have a full-fledged plan in front of us. There is a plan for how we're addressing the unhoused. And these organizations that provide these services are a part of that plan. So um, I just hope you take that into consideration, the services that will be denied uh if these organizations don't receive these funds.
All right, uh, Councilwoman uh Lee.
I just wanted to reiterate the importance of us spending this money. These agencies already have measures in place for immediate shelter, homelessness prevention, street outreach, and these are the things that we need immediately. So I would just ask my colleagues to please support this.
All right, Councilman Harley.
Yes, uh, and again.
I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
No, I defer.
Okay, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my question is, um, the last whereas here on the front page of this emergency item says, the contract shall be effective October one, two thousand twenty-three. Okay, I see it was, it's through September thirty, twenty twenty-four, but why, why, why is it that we're just getting this today in May?
Well, well, go, go. If if it's what I think, if it's a personnel matter, are we gonna have to go into executive session? And I, I ain't got time to do that, if if that's what it is. I don't know if we want to.
We'll try to circumvent it somewhat. Uh, my name is Loretta Johnson. I work in the Development Assistance Division, and I sort of oversee the um Emergency Solutions Grant. It has just come to me this year. However, every year, the contracts that we write do run a period from October first to September thirtieth. Because um there were some logistical issues within the department, we were able to, we had to suspend the actual rolling out of those funds. When we were given the go-ahead in January, we actually had already committed ourselves to these agencies. We had vetted them and their capacity to be able to spend this money. So once we were able to roll the money out, award these firms at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, then we started the legal process of sending the the contracts and through legal for review to make sure that they had no problem with the language or any of the terms of the contract. The money has already been awarded. We have the funding that has already been given to us from HUD. So the spending period is already eight months in. They have exactly three and some more months to spend this money.
All right.
The contract expires September thirtieth, but we do that because we have till the rest of the year to actually make sure we do our reporting on it, which we do in December through means of the uh caper, the consolidated plan.
So why, why, why are we just getting it? Now, that didn't answer my question. Can you answer the question? Why is the council just getting it on May twenty-first?
From my understanding, it's set on the desk of somebody longer than it should have. And I think in order to have that conversation, we will have to go into executive session. Listen, I, guys, and 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 I'm, you know, I can entertain conversation to a certain degree to get it added to the agenda. I'm asking so that we won't lose future funding, because it's very difficult to go and get that funding uh again when we have gotten it historically, and then especially if it's going back. And I I don't, I don't want us to have that bad mark on us, because we're gonna need that funding, all right? So I'm asking if we would consider this. And and look, I, I, I hear the concerns, but let's not blame Voices of Calvary and some of these other organizations for issues that we may have going on wherever, all right? Let's make sure these organizations are equipped to continue to do the service that they do. All right? Um, so if 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 I can get the proper consideration so we can add this to the agenda and then get on the floor to discuss it for real, and then we can still have a discussion. Uh, there is a motion in a second. All in favor of adding this to the agenda? Oppose? All right. Um, item would not be added. We cannot bring it back during this meeting. Um. Let me, let me, let me ask, let me ask this question. Is this still on the floor? It's not. Cause I can only have limited discussion, cause I had to add it. But once we get it on the agenda, we can have the proper discussion. This has, let me ask this question. Uh, let, let, let's do this, let's do this. Can I get a a motion to add um item, to add order authorizing the mayor to do uh contracts with various organizations and solutions, grant ESG programming to the agenda as a discussion?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. We add this to the agenda as a discussion. Can I get the votes for that? All in favor? All right.
Y'all gonna turn this money back?
Let me ask this, has the money already been dispersed? It hasn't? Okay. All right.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Look, you, you made a very elegant point about deadlines and uh hating to send money back and et cetera. The fact that we have to be there is a problem that that these organizations are looking at and giving the money in the first place. The fact that we don't have a plan, because if we were working and implementing that plan, we wouldn't even be here discussing this, having to send money back. And so that's why I lead with that idea of a plan. We, we are in this very situation because we, we don't have anything. And if we had something, then why didn't we implement it? So we could have been spending this money in the first place. Why did it have to come up as an emergency?
Mr. Harley.
Somebody dropped the ball, and and we have a lot of that.
Hold, there, there's a vote against this being a discussion. I, I would welcome the discussion.
Nah, that's okay. Done. Just wanted to repeat, reply to what you had said earlier.
All right, uh. Yeah, I, I, again, look, y'all, I, I, I think we've said what we need to say, this, this, look, we have three items left. Um, y'all.
Can I go mine? Can I go mine?
I think we're on thirty now.
Twenty-nine already been done. Uh.
Thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. President, this is to uh, this discussion item is the current, to examine the current funding to demolish buildings and clean up vacant lots. Uh, and the reason that I brought this up is because on today's agenda, last week, uh, last meeting's agenda, we had like sixty-three items that had gone before the uh, gone before the environmental court. And, cool, just one, one sec, colleagues, I gotta go, I gotta catch a flight, all right? And so uh, I'm not being disrespectful, I just gotta catch a flight. All right, thank you. Safe travels. Uh, we had sixty-three items that were, that had been taken to environmental court from the uh code enforcement services. Out of that, we had about uh four or five that was brought before the city council for ratification that we'd also declared as a public health hazard. Out of that, there may be another handful that we actually uh had invoices on, and we were proceeding and getting them cleaned up. And uh today, in this meeting's agenda, we have forty-seven that have been stamped uh public menace, health hazard by the environmental court. We have zero that came before the city council today, and we have two that have been contracted out. Okay? And what I'm looking at, there's a lot going before an environmental court, and there are a lot of public health hazards and minutes that are, and menaces that are out there. I want, I'm concerned about the funding. Is this one of the reasons why we can't take it from forty-seven to forty-seven uh before the city council to forty-seven being worked on and paid for to get cleaned up? It continue to be a big issue around a lot of wards, destroying neighborhoods. Uh, I was on a, on a conference call last night with a neighborhood in South, South Jackson, one of my neighborhoods, along with Representative um, uh, Crutip. And we had a long, like, the discussion. He was able to get funding for it, and it was more funding than I believe that the city of Jackson had been putting into it. So I want to know the definitive answer on funding to clean up these abandoned properties. The process is sound, the process is good, we go to environmental court, we have a good case, it comes from there, then it comes before the city council. Or do all of them have to come before the city council to declare the health menace? And then what's the limitation? Why aren't we seeing more than a handful of them actually being cleaned up around the entire city?
Samantha Graves, Community Improvement Manager. Um, so right now, in general funding, we have approximately like forty-two thousand left in demolition, and we're currently trying to move the fourteen thousand that we had in the grass and weed budget over to demolition. The projects that we have currently, um, that we're using general funding money is actually going to be over the funding that we have, um, so we can only finish up certain project. So we're choosing that. Um, CDBG, we're currently working on that, so we have twelve projects that's under environmental review. We have five projects that. twelve projects that's under environmental review. We have five projects that we're issuing out the NTPs as of today. Um, the District Seventy-One money, that's what we're currently working on. So you'll see the bids come out soon for those.
Okay, so about how many projects do we, about how much money do we actually have left? And about how many, how many projects do we, do you think we'll have coming up before the end of fiscal year?
Uh, District Seventy-One, we have the two fifty. CDBG.
Two, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm, for the District Seventy-One. For the CDBG, we have the two hundred thousand, but the environmental reviews is included in it. And the environmental reviews for the twelve project is twenty-four thousand, two hundred, taken from the two hundred thousand. One sixty-six.
Okay, my, my, my question is this. Um, what is actually available to us right now to clean up those properties?
The general funding, we have.
Well, I mean, and these grants, is there, is, you know, you mentioned CDBG money and others. What's actually available for us to be using to clean up? Because you guys, I, I just feel as though, you know, you shouldn't have us work stoppage on cleaning up because you ran out of money if it's over here in another pot. Do we have access to it? How long will it take to get access to that money? Uh, I mean, you guys doing an outstanding job of getting it to the court and getting it declared, but when it comes to actually getting it, the, uh, the, uh, you know, the problem, you know, resolved, we're, we're waiting.
Correct. We have more projects than we do have funding. And with some of that funding, it's stipulations around it. With CDBG, you can only use CDBG in certain areas. You have to do environmental reviews, which take a while. You have to bid it out through central bidding. So some of that plays a factor. Um, with District Seventy-One, you can only use it in District Seventy-One.
So, are, are we gonna be seeing any increases in the number of projects we have cleaned up within the next few months?
Uh, we should. We should. We have stuff in the pipeline currently. So you will see more projects coming through.
Okay, another question, and maybe, I don't know if you can answer it or not. Is, is there a way we can get CDBG money that's, that's, um, that earmarked just for cleaning up these projects? I mean, in the way of a million dollars or two million dollars? Is there anything out there for that?
Currently, at this time, I do not know, but I'll find out.
Can, can we find out? Because again, I, I believe this is a good time for, uh, CDBG money to be used for purposes just like this, uh, coming down from the Biden's administration, coming down directly to the municipalities. And we have a problem. And if we continue to have these, these abandoned properties, these burnt out structures, these overgrown lots, we're going to continue to lose our citizens. And we're going to continue to lose our tax base. And then we will be broke. But if we can clean up and show that these, uh, these properties are worth something, and we can keep the, the current owner's property value up, then they can have that investment. But the way it's going now, these things, they're, they're hurting our, a lot of my neighborhoods over in Ward Five and in South Jackson as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm all in for us trying to find that money, um, and, uh, find that money and make sure it's targeted, uh, to these efforts to clean up. It's a lot at stake here, a lot. And I just want to know that, hey, you guys are doing your job, but the money part. And I had a question last night as well on it, on the conference call, and that, and the question was, would it be cheaper if the city just, uh, got money and did the projects themselves?
There's talk about that too. But we'll need money for equipment.
Okay, and this was the, um, Alter Woods subdivision, uh, and they were asking, and uh, asking a lot of these questions. But again, it, it's a priority. It's an urgent need for us to make sure that money is transferred where you guys can use it to get these properties, uh, cleaned up. It's urgent. I can't, I can't harp on any, you know. So, uh, thank you for the, that information, and I'll be asking questions as we go along.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harley. Can you just please stay? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, Ms. Graves, um, do you have a dollar, a total dollar amount for all the properties that are, you know, abandoned or that are, are on your list? In other words, if, if, um, somebody came in and, and asked, you know, the total dollar, uh, that we needed to clean them all up? If we, if we could clean them all up, how would it be? Do you have a dollar amount on that?
For all the dilapidation in the City of Jackson as a whole?
Yeah.
You're looking at probably millions.
About how much?
It's, it's, you can look at a millions, like, millions.
Only a million? Or millions? Millions, I mean, it can be more specific than that. I think for, for what, um, Councilman, uh, Harley is, is trying to do, and, and I've got another item on here. I'll just merge into this same question.
Thank you, Mr. Foot.
The, um, we need to be, we need to come up with a number that, that has some basis in, in, you know, the data that you've got on abandoned properties. If it's two thousand four hundred and thirty-one properties and the typical cost is ten thousand dollars, then, you know, what does that end up being? Is that twenty million dollars? But we need a number that we can use if we're gonna talk to our federal delegation or whoever, uh, or the state or whoever. So if you could put a pencil to that and get back with us on a dollar amount, that would be really helpful.
Councilman, I mean, Councilwoman Lindsay, I mean, Lee, I'm sorry. I didn't name everybody here. Uh, a part of that dollar amount is not only, uh, just putting the average cost of demolition and the number of dilapidated properties. It's also, uh, the title clearing process that allows us to enter and, and start the demolitions on those. And that was the gap with the, um, blight elimination funding that we had, is that while there was a lot of money available through blight partners like, uh, New Horizon, that was a, a part of that process, we all fell short of where we wanted to go is because the money was not present for the administrative costs, which were in many regards more expensive than the actual demolition itself. Um, and so that is, uh, a number, if you can get it, we would like to get it. Uh, if there is some complication to that, then we want to know what the complication is to that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harley?
Yes, uh, and look, I'm not trying to make this complicated, but the urgency is clear for a lot of the property owners out there. They are serious. Their property value has gone down to nothing. And they need, they need some type of relief. I'm not sure what all you, uh, obviously know the, all the impediments, all the issues and this thing and that thing. They just want it done. They want these properties cleaned up. They want it cleaned up last year or year before last. And they keep calling and they keep calling. And that's what I'm hearing. And basically what I tell them, I give them the number to code, code services. And I said, hey, uh, you know, but, I mean, that is the, one of the number one, I hear more about abandoned properties and overgrown lots in their neighborhoods than I hear about potholes. And they're afraid of, of, because of their property values and their neighborhood and losing all that. And so to me, it's, it's one of my highest priorities. And, uh, I'm gonna keep pressing this issue until we can figure it out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harley. Mr. Foot, are you done with your discussion item as well? Okay. Thank you. Okay, I just have, uh, my discussion item, and it's just Mr. Wright to give us an update on the West County Line projects that I texted you late last night about.
Yes, thank you. Louis Wright, CAO. You did text me about West County Line Ruin, the big, um, shoulder deterioration there. I got word this morning that they started work on, uh, repacking that. They're gonna put some gravel there until it's settled, and then paved streets will come in and repave that area. So, um, they're working on it as of today.
Were they able to go back out and pick up the barrels? That's what I was, thank you.
Yes, and make it safe.
Thank you. And I think we already did thirty-three and thirty-four. Can council members, um, attest that they've received their monthly financial reports by saying aye?
All right.
On your hand? Thank you. Okay, now it's time for the end of the meeting with closing statements. Any closing statements or remarks?
Uh, I had a whole list of, okay, Dr. Murray took my announcements.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
So, save the date. The Office of Constituent Services is scheduling a town hall meeting to be held Monday, June tenth at six P M. The location is pending, uh, and will be announced during, uh, one of our weekly press, uh, conferences on Monday. Uh, for more information, you can contact Constituent Services Manager Chris Gray, uh, at six oh one nine six zero one 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 one. Uh, the City of Jackson's, uh, Job Career Expo twenty twenty-four. The City of Jackson is hosting its Career Expo on Thursday, June sixth, at ten A M. to two P M. at the Jackson Medical Mall, which is located at three fifty West Woodrow Wilson Avenue, uh, dressed to impress. Uh, bring your resume for onsite interviews and on-the-spot conditional hiring. Uh, please contact the Department of Human Resources at six oh one nine six zero ten fifty-three. Uh, also, there is a very big press conference today, uh, at the Mississippi Museum of Art, uh, at three P M. So, uh, obviously, I'm inviting, uh, council members, uh, and members of the public who would like to be there.
Thank you, Mayor. Any others? Mr. Harley?
Would there be a roll-off dumpster day? I know we counseled it twice or moved it and then counseled it.
We will get back with, I don't have anything present to, we will work, obviously, we're gonna try to have a roll-off dumpster day, but I can't announce what that date would be as I stand here.
Thank you. And I would just ask for us to keep Soli, Senator Solid Norwood's family in our prayers. Seeing nothing else, meeting is adjourned.